Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, August 14. It's six o'clock PM here at the Select Board Conference Room at Town Hall. I just want to let everybody know this meeting is being recorded. And if anyone else is recording the meeting today, let Jason know. Six o'clock, we have public comments after I ask Buddy to lead us in the pledge.
What we do by the United States of America and to recall which stance one nation under God indivisible with liberty and the throne.
Public comments, anyone? Could you state your name and address for the record?
Bert Hanson, 153 Markine Road, chairman of the AgCon. There's going to be a lot of ag stuff on the agenda tonight, but I just had to put in one more plug for Open Farm Day on Sunday. We have nine farms and the Street Museum participating. And you'll be seeing these signs around town on Sunday, so either stop in where you're seeing them or beware of traffic as you're going by.
Awesome. Anyone else? No one else in the room, anyone on Zoom? Joanne, we get it passed tonight.
Yes, but do you have a response to my question from last week?
I do, and I have it written on my computer, and I shall send it to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You got to keep it open at least a little.
Yeah.
Thanks.
My line.
Perfect. Well, we got a couple of minutes before our first appointment, so why don't we pay a couple of bills? It's about page 28 of your agenda. Acknowledged payables warrant 2403B dated August 7th in the amount of $622,319.18. Acknowledged special payables warrant 2404B dated August 10th, 2023, in the amount of $1,575. Acknowledged payroll warrant 2404 dated 8/14/2023 in the amount of $271,737.38. And have you had a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, then I entertain a motion to accept the open session minutes from August 7.
I'll make a motion to accept the open meeting minutes from August 7.
Motion made in second, roll call vote, Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
And we need, do we need to make a motion to officially do this, or I thought we did this last week? The, the Emergency Management Director.
You, you appointed him to that, but you
Pointed to those, to those
To those other three entities, which is the Radio One, the Emergency Management Agency, and the Citizens Emergency Response.
Okay. So I need a motion to appoint Russ Anderson as the Emergency Management Director to RACES, SEMA, and CERT, and to okay changes to his Mass General Law 268A, Special Municipal Employee Ethics Commission listing.
I will make a motion to
Do all of that?
All of that.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Peron, aye. And he has met with the outgoing director and has had a transition.
Fantastic. I was going to try to save you from having to sneak all the way back there and then coming up because it's 6:05. You ready?
I tried.
No problem.
Okay with the album?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let me just check with Sage. Can you hear us okay online?
Yep, just fine. You guys are good.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Floor is yours.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening. Thank you for having me. Marissa Kavogon, 126 South Loomis Street. Here tonight on behalf of the Agricultural Commission to discuss the draft protocol that I've developed for Chapter 61. And I sent a copy a few weeks ago to the Select Board. Not sure how you would like to proceed in terms of reviewing it at this point, or if there's been the opportunity to review it, if there are questions. I'm open to the format in terms of how this can be best discussed.
Well, I think just from where I sit, you, you kind of spoke to it under public comment at a previous meeting, and we said we would schedule it for a future agenda item, so now we're giving you the floor to kind of explain it in detail how you see it working.
Great.
If that's okay with
Perfect, fine.
Great. That sounds great. So I'll take it from the top then and kind of give a, a brief summary. So Chapter 61 breaks down into three components. It's just Chapter 61, Chapter 61A, and Chapter 61B. And these three programs are part of Massachusetts General Law, and they pertain to the taxation of land. Each one of those three programs, that is a subsection of Chapter 61, corresponds to a different usage of land, recreation, agricultural, and agroforestry. And the idea of this program in that, you know, there's a taxation advantage for people to register in it is that they keep their land in one of those uses, and therefore they don't develop it. So they get a really good tax cut in return for not developing it. It doesn't mean that they can't develop it later on. It's just that for the period of time that they're using it for whatever part of the chapter that they happen to have eligibility for, again, be it recreation, agricultural, or agroforestry, they get that tax incentive. When the time comes that they wish to sell that land or change its usage from any one of those three that they've been registered under until that point. The caveat of having been registered in a program like this is that when it comes time to sell, the town, the community that the location is in gets the right of first refusal. So this term of right of first refusal goes to the town, and that's where our protocol comes in. So that was a little bit of the background as to why the protocol is important. Once the town receives this notice from the landowner and usually their attorney, that they wish to either sell that property or change its usage. So they may not sell the property in some scenarios. They may just want to change, convert the usages, the terminology state law uses. The town has the right to say something and either step in, purchase that property with town monies, or if there is no interest or there's no money, then the town can say, thanks, but no thanks. You did your due diligence as a landowner. You can now take this piece of property out of Chapter 61 and sell it. In most scenarios, that's what, that's what happens. Obviously, there aren't unlimited municipal funds to purchase every single property. Some properties simply aren't relevant to overall strategy in terms of conservation in town. So that's the majority of the scenarios. However, there are scenarios where there are pieces of property that have been identified through the Open Space Plan in town and through other boards and committees that have an interest in conservation. And the problem has been that over the years, and I've served on a land use board for five years, the Agricultural Commission, we oftentimes don't hear about the right of first refusal opportunity until much later in the game. Sometimes the correct documentation that is also required for a landowner to notify the town that their land is up for sale or the usage is changing. It's not there, so we don't have the right information. And one of the key points in order to be able to make a purchase offer is to have a bona fide purchase and sale agreement, and that has to be based on market prices and be something reasonable, something fair. And if we actually don't have this documentation from the attorney or the landowner, we're kind of scrambling around. And the issue, apart from scrambling around not being a pleasant thing for anybody, is that these programs also have timeframes. If you're going to sell your land, you have 120 days to give the town the opportunity to purchase that land or consider purchasing it. If you hear about it as a land use board and you potentially have ID'd this parcel of land as an interesting prospect for conservation, you're hearing about it 60 days in, you're already halfway through the timeline. And I think we all understand that there are various steps to purchasing land and using public monies in a responsible way and ascertaining as to whether that's even a viable option or not. So the 120 days is really important, and that's why I wanted to propose this protocol. This is a protocol that many towns in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts use. It's a protocol that simply reflects Mass General Law. When I developed this protocol, I went to the mass.gov website. I read the legislation, and I literally just copied and pasted and adjusted it accordingly for our town hall. We have a select board. Unlike other communities that may have a mayor or city council, we also have a chief administrative officer. So there were some tweaks that I made in order to make this flow and be relevant for Southwick. The way that I've set this up is that it's a checklist, both for the landowners. So when they come to town hall and they wish to sell or change the usage, they have the documentation that state law requires, a statement of intent to sell. If there's a certified copy of the purchase and sale agreement which specifies purchase price, that's handed over as well. We also have to make sure that it's delivered via certified mail or hand-delivered here to town hall with a receipt. And it's honestly just doing our due diligence and complying with Massachusetts state law. There's nothing in this protocol that is being proposed that Massachusetts state law doesn't already require us to do. This is more of a workflow for us here in town hall because there are a lot of moving pieces. There are boards that should be privy to this information in a timely manner so that they can decide. And that's not happened in the past, so that's why I'm proposing this. And I've gone to the relevant boards that would have some decision or at least be considered for decision making power as to whether they wish to pursue a particular property or not. And I've got an endorsement from the Agricultural Commission, from the Conservation Commission, from the Park and Recreation Committee or Commission, I believe. And after this, I'm speaking with the Historical Commission. They just have not had a quorum for the past few meetings. It's also been presented to the Planning Board as well as the Board of Assessors. And oh, I also have endorsement from the Community Preservation Committee, which would be the, one of the entities that would decide to bankroll this or not. There's also the option to not bankroll this through town monies. This protocol, if we follow it and we go through to the end and there is interest, we can assign that interest to a land trust. And I feel that's something that's been overlooked in the town as well as an option. So not using public money, but obviously finding different ways and different avenues of funding to preserve strategic pieces of land. So I'm here tonight to just discuss the flow. I want to make sure that all the commissions and committees that are privy to this protocol and state law have some say in how it's structured, that it's actually logical, that there's the opportunity for feedback to ensure that it's not too onerous, that it's clear for both us on the town hall side, but also for the landowner. If we go through this in a quick fashion, if this protocol were to be adopted, and we find that there's no interest or strategic value or monies to purchase a particular property that comes up in right of first refusal, we can also move that much faster if we have a protocol like this in place, so that we can let the landowner know, hey, we kind of went through all our boards already. They've deliberated it. You know, no one's really interested in this. You are free to sell it. If we could get that moving along within a 30-day timeframe, that gives the landowner that much more leverage and time to kind of move on with their life as well. So I see it as a system of checks and balances for us internally to make sure we have the right communication, but it's also to ensure that the landowner can kind of move along in the process. And if there is no interest, then they can move on with their life, sell the piece of property, and we all can just crack on with our days. So that's it in a nutshell. Any questions, anything that should be clarified? I don't know how familiar folks are with Chapter 61, but happy to clarify anything that may be.
What's interesting is during my research on this, I had sent it to Chairman Boglin, and actually, I sent it to Mr. Steinhardt, who just dispensed it out to everybody. Did you realize there is right now proposed new legislation to change that?
Yes.
Before the, for 61.
Yes, and I've been in contact with the senator who filed it. At this point, there's been no further update, so
It's pretty much stalled.
It is, yes, since February.
You did all this work, and I found this. I'm like, ooh.
That was a 61F.
Actually, 61, 61A, and the other stuff.
Oh, was that too?
Yeah. It is. Sometimes some legislation moves right through quickly, and other stuff just stalls. It's referred to committee and nothing.
Exactly. So that's why I reached out.
We talked about that a little bit last, last meeting, too.
Yeah, yeah. And I've alerted Senator Coverford to where we're at in the process, and if there were any updates, you know, kind of have an understanding to, to just be aware of what's coming. If something were to change over the next month, for instance, then we could obviously just decide to move on. But thank you for, for that update, yes.
Can you move land from within the chapters without it being subject to the right of first refusal? So someone took land from 61A to 61, for example, they were going to convert it from ag to recreational use. Does that trigger the same process, do you know?
I don't know. There are different eligibility requirements. So as long as the eligibility requirements are met, I don't think there would be an issue. I think if you move within the program, it doesn't trigger right of 61. The caveat would be making sure that there is eligibility because for three, pardon, two of the three, there's a requirement of, I believe, five acres minimum, and then for one of them, there's 10. So that could be the sticking point. But apart from that, I think there is a kind of seamless transition, but I can verify that with the state law. But I think that was the case, at least at one point.
I guess, but it's more intended like if land was going to come out of 61, and we always use that term, right? Whether it's 61A, 61F, or just 61.
Correct, yeah. I mean, the way that state law reads is that if it's coming out of a 61, 61A or 61B program, this is triggered as a conversion difference. So I don't think within the program that would be a scenario.
When you, when you talk, I don't know what level of discussion with the assessors. So a person can have their land in one of these chapters, and then at some point they could just choose not to renew, to keep it into that chapter, and then they'd have to, you know, they just wouldn't be eligible for the tax break anymore. And then we've had other people that wanted to take it out because of the sale issues, and then there's the rollback.
Right, exactly.
Idea. So was there any, you know, obviously, that's one of the nuances that when we get into, we have to follow these things when we see land coming available. Question is, is it still in it? Did it get taken out? Are they going to do a rollback? All those types of questions.
Exactly, exactly. So I've discussed this with the Assessor's Office, and specifically Sue Gore. And I've also lived through a few experiences on the Agricultural Commission where people have taken it out of that usage, say agricultural in that instance, 61A, because they want to put a house on it. So in that scenario, you know, we deliberated, but it's pretty clear that they want to put a house on it. It's, it's their land. And in those instances, we say, okay, well, we really aren't interested. And at that point, refer it back to the Assessor's Office and say, well, you have to figure out what your rollback is going to be in that case. So I think the rules are pretty clear as to what the assessor has to then do in terms of evaluating what the rollback tax is going to be. But I don't think that's necessarily within the purview of this protocol. I think that would be more along the lines of the assessor figuring out, yeah.
Jason? You know, I've read everything, and I know why Marissa's doing this, and anything that streamlines the process would obviously make things a lot easier for everybody. So I, you know, I think it's a good proposal.
I'm pretty familiar with 61, 61A, et cetera, but Section 3, discussion with Select Board Relevant Board, and then having a public hearing. In some cases, that may be right up to the deadline or beyond. And then I think you can ask the party to extend that 120 days.
Section 3, should be 14 days just to announce a public hearing for that 14 days?
Yeah, I mean it. Those statutes govern what the noticing requirements are, or something. Sometimes just the hearing, the word hearing can be a generic word, too, where you're given public notice and asking people to assemble or do something. So that's why whenever we're going to have a hearing, we always make sure we go and look at the appropriate section in the law to see is this truly something we do, or is it just something we do by tradition?
But could there be a legitimate extension then, if we were
We've asked people to give us extensions, but it's generally in their court to, to provide that courtesy.
Exactly. The state law is pretty clear on what we have in terms of the town hall side to decide if we wish to request an extension. It would have to be negotiated with landowner and their attorney at that point, which has happened. There have been precedents of that occurring. But that's, you know, we're still working within the timeframe of what the state law says, 120 days for sale, a mere 30 days for change in conversion. So but then again, with most, you know, most scenarios where somebody wants to change the usage of their lands, it's not necessarily to sell it out to the market. It's like at that point, you know, they are entitled to change their land usage. It's just that they, they are triggered by the state law that they have to go through this process, but then I think there's kind of understanding at that point from the boards that the landowner just wants to take their land out of it and pursue their own conversion for their usage, you know. So it's not losing the land. It's just that they've decided to use it in a different manner.
I assume town council will review this and fix the format and everything.
That was, yeah, my next question. And I mean, these laws are always updating. So I've been trying to keep up, and I haven't seen any significant updates or any updates really. But I would hope that town council could kind of vet this against MGL, make sure that it's
And if we go forward with it, I would recommend that if you mailed with the CL1 forms each year, or at least the first year for all the people who are in it already. And then maybe next year or the following years, it's just a reference to it online or something.
That was, yeah, that was a question I had for your board in terms of distribution. If this were to be passed, what is the most efficient way of making successful?
At least make everybody know it exists.
Right.
Get it the first pass.
Correct. Yeah. I mean, I think the biggest thing here in terms of distribution is making sure that the landowner is privy to, to all the different boxes they have to check off before they come to town hall. So online, it was one thing the Board of Assessors had suggested. Obviously, it's about they and their attorney could print a version of this off, but I was wondering if there was another mechanism through mailing via from town hall that
Sure. Could be with the, with the the notice, too, but you know, it's always a challenge, too, around that. Not defending it, but even going back to, Bert and I have had this kind of conversation, kind of hallway conversation. We have, we're right to farm town. Everyone, when you buy a piece of property in town, is supposed to receive a declaration of that that gets filed with your deed. How often does it happen, Bert? Not enough. And I don't think we could reach out to every attorney in the, you know, the greater Springfield area to say, by the way, you should be doing that. But it would be nice if there was a better way to, to do that. And it says it right on our website. There are signs coming into town. Thank you very much. And, you know, but still, it's not filed with every, you know, a lot of the deeds that go through. So it is, it's going to be a constant challenge. And I think a lot of times we run up against this clock. I know you and I ran up against it once where they were hustling to a close, and the lawyer was alerted that they had to go through this process. And everyone's rushing around, and it wasn't land. I don't think that anybody, that one wasn't on the list of all the, the list of lists, but it was a challenge to try to figure out, and it's a challenge for the boards to go back and say, okay, now I have two days to figure this out if we can, if we want to do this, and then how would we do it, and where would the money come from and everything else. So I, I'd say we take this, you know, and figure out how we can get the distribution of the protocol is as much a challenge as it is of the the implementation of said protocol, because a lot of it just goes by.
It is an annual form that we have to file
Yeah.
to keep that tax status. So getting it once a year with that reminds that this is the refund if you're going to change.
But just from an operational standpoint, that's mailed out from the town clerk's office or from the Board of Assessors' office?
From Board of Assessors.
Okay. So, okay, that would be a conversation in the future. So to be mindful of with the Board of Assessors, and okay. Good to know.
I mean, in subsequent years, it could just be a one-sheet statement instead of the entire packet. And then if you're going to make a change, request the full packet kind of thing. But the first time around, this would be good.
Yeah, I mean, this just hopefully has potential to be iterated on and streamlined further, so it's an initial stab, I suppose.
Okay. Why don't we carry this, we'll send it to the attorney. We'll carry this under Old Business and figure out where we're going to go with this.
Chairman, do you want to have it sent to the attorney to be reviewed, or you just want to review it at your next meeting on Old Business, then make discussions, and then subsequently?
Correct. The latter, sir. But we'll carry it at our next meeting, and then we'll move it along with some haste. Fair enough.
Very good. All right. Well, I am open to any questions that the attorney have.
We know we have a deadline that we're working on.
That's right, a due date, right? Yes, all right, okay.
Yeah, that's what happened last time I went with that joke. It went nowhere. So I just let it go this time.
Forget it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Quick question. Bert Hanson, 153 Markine Road. Several people are out, a little lobby.
Yep.
Can we bring in more chairs?
We can, and yeah, we also have the auditorium open. So if anyone's here strictly for an appointment discussion and don't want to sit through all the drudgery, you're more than welcome to wait there, and we'll come get you at the time of your appointment. Time, or we can bring in more chairs, or both. There you go.
But don't leave. We want to hear from you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Diane, don't leave the bell.
Okay. Seeing how it's 6:20.
EDC is the first.
Yeah. Okay. Why did that just come up? And if you're on Zoom, you can stay right where you are. Okay, 6:20, fiscal year 24, reappointments for Commissions, Committees, and Boards. So we're going to go through a few boards tonight. And we're going, and I've tried to work with staff to summarize where we are on the boards. I know when we get to agricultural, there's a I don't know if it's a scrutiny error or a communication error, but we're gonna, we're going to talk about that when we get to it. I don't think it's a big snafu that's going to mess us up. But, and for Jason and Diane, you guys can ask any of the applicants any, any question you want. This is not like we're hiring a position like a police officer or a fire department. We're not making an offer of employment to anybody, so anything is pretty much fair game. And this year, we've done things a little bit differently. I appreciate everybody who serves on a board or commission or is interested in serving on a board or commission. We instituted the portal this year to have people indicate their level of interest in a particular board or commission or more than one board or commission, as the case may be. And we had quite a great turnout of people that are interested to serve the town, so much appreciated. So with that, we're going to go through each board as per the agenda. We're going to go through this, a brief description of the, the seats. And then there's a couple of boards that have a couple of notes with them. And then we're going to give anybody who has, that's on the agenda tonight, the opportunity to speak and address the Select Board, and then we're going to proceed forward. So first is Economic Development Commission. EDC currently has five seats per town council. These seats should be staggered. Therefore, the appointments will be one each for a period of five, four, three, two, and one year, and successive appointments shall be for five years per Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 8A. So you okay so far? Are we on the same page?
Yeah.
Okay. In no particular order, is Michael McMahon here?
He's not. I don't think I've gotten such a phone.
Okay.
We did get a letter for him, obviously.
Yes. We did get that.
He's not either.
Got a letter from you, too.
Okay, good.
Let's go.
We don't have Jack here either for us.
Serena, see that?
Yeah, I saw Serena. Yeah. Is Jack Cody here? So first is the letter from
Yeah, Cody in the lobby.
I don't know.
I just have an email from Mr. McMahon that says, I'm interested in serving another term, 23 to 24 on the EDC. I just have an email from Mr. McMahon that says I'm interested in serving another term twenty-three to twenty-four in the EDC. And then. Next up.
You're not here? No, not yet.
Okay, is there an Amber Bach here? Oh, what do you know? How are you? Good. Have anything for us?
No, I'm just interested in being reinstated and serving, I've been on it, we we lost a couple of years during COVID, I think, so uh. You know, I helped put on some of the home business shows, the job there. Uh, one of the missed statements, and uh, you know, I helped write that, so. Kind of we're in the process of working through some stuff right now, and so I'm hoping that this kind of keep on and stand all.
I don't have any questions on Miss Bach right now.
I might as well throw some out. What do you view as the strengths and opportunities of this commission?
So uh, right now, the strength of the commission is more just for, I think, moral support with the businesses. Um, you know, keeping everybody kind of. In the loop with what's going on for as much information that we have as well.
Uh, opportunities.
Oh, opportunities, I, you know, just serving the community and businesses of the community.
Can you describe one or two key things you'd like to see incorporate or change in Southwick's economy?
Um, I think that we should, um, you know, have a good structure of. Businesses that, you know, the the community. Is comfortable having here, that's gonna also benefit us economically, um. You know, I think that, you know, any business that we have. Um, helps our community grow, and it's our, you know, economic basis for us as well.
I do what I want. Uh, attendance, how often are you able to come to the meetings?
So I attend probably about half the meetings, yeah, I have some medical concerns, um. So I do as much as possible, um, again, we don't have. Like voting rights, we don't have a whole lot, you know, that, you know. Is in law that people come, you know, for that, so we're kind of more of, um. Helpful, I would say, um, you know, to the businesses and and trying to do. What the home business shows, the job fair is that kind of thing, so.
Thank you.
Where's Sage? Sage, can you hear the folks in the audience on Zoom?
Yes, I can, loud and clear.
Perfect, thank you, Sage. Just wanted to make sure, because sometimes I can't hear from the back, and I don't want to make people having to trudge all the way up here, if you can be heard, okay. Awesome. Anything else? Serena Fuller. Hi, how are you?
I've been on the board, I don't know how many years now, but um. I would like to continue to serve as well, and and mirror what Amber said, you know, try to promote the businesses. Helping in where we can, the visibility and um. Support. Whether it's a business show or just promoting, you know, we were talking about having a job fair, we weren't able to do that, um. But.
Doctor?
Same question, I guess, would be for me, Serena, how often are you able to attend the meetings when they're actually?
Seventy-five to eighty.
Same question, one or two things you'd like to incorporate or change in Southwick's economy?
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to see more businesses come in and stay, um. And um, you know, support one another, I think that's important, so bi-local. And I'm really big into that, so I'd like to see more of that happening in some way that we could do that.
Have Sage. There you go, Sage, can you hear us? Is, can the new chairman of EDC hear us?
Yep.
Okay. Where did we lose you?
Uh, hard to really say, was that at the beginning of you talking?
Of like, welcome to the select board meeting of August, uh, Jason. Okay, so did you hear me, did everybody hear Amber and Serena? Nodding of heads on the other end, yes, okay, good. So I was just gonna announce Inga Hoteling Washington.
Oh, am I sorry?
We're just, we're gonna, we're gonna figure it out.
All right, um.
Washington, forty-five Klein Road. Um, I've started attending the EDC meetings over a year and a half ago. And I've only missed one of the meetings during that duration, because I was traveling out of the area. And I wanted to see the EDC become something more than it is. Uh, the first two meetings that I attended with them, I asked, what is your purpose? And they really couldn't say what the purpose was, because as the ladies had stated. There really isn't any power that the EDC has or influence that it has. But even with that, there has to be a purpose. So one of the things that I asked if I could do for them was to contact local communities, and they told me the communities that they'd like for me to benchmark. And I contacted their EDC groups to find out what is it that the EDC does for them. And they're definitely more robust in surrounding communities. And then I came back and said, well, why don't we think first about where our mission is? And come up with what the direction is for the EDC. So it's been a really cool journey as a private citizen working with this group. To identify how can we function as a commission? And how can we potentially cross-pollinate into other commissions as well? And in my opinion, I think one of the strengths that the EDC could have. Is to cross-pollinate with the planning board, or even with the assessor's office. To find out who's talking about coming into the town, and what offer could we as the EDC offer about any due diligence? As to how many employees they could possibly bring in, what would their revenue strength be? How would that character fit within our current character? So I believe that there's opportunities here. And in regards to the recruiting aspect, they mentioned a few minutes ago, Doug. One of my areas of expertise is I am an executive recruiter, and that's my career for the past thirty years. So I would love to be able to do a couple of. Job fairs where we can actually sit with our. Community and say, prior to the affairs, what type of talent are you having a hard time finding? And then be able to take my experience to leverage that, to find out how can we help our community with our business owners? And stimulate that for the economy, and also just our projected growth for um the businesses revenues. So I see a lot of pockets here that we could potentially as a commission bring value to. Um, one of the initiatives I took last year at one of our meetings in October, November. Was, well, we do the shop small thing, and Mike is really good going around to local businesses, giving them the signage that we did from American Express. Or whoever's sponsoring it, and I said, well, geez, why don't we do maybe like the first taste of Southwick? And try and stimulate businesses by having bags where people would go there and put through their name for a drawing. But they had to go to the business, and then I had restaurants in the local area here in town. Excuse me, in town, give gifts or took a test. Only twenty-five dollars, though Village People, uh, Village Pizza insisted on thirty dollars. Just to get people to come, and most of all, our winners, we had fourteen winners. Only three were from Southwick, the rest all came here that weekend, especially to go to Cowards to buy their treat. So these people came back into the community and they were psyched, especially with one who won the daily grind. Always wanted to go there to eat, but never could go, because he was always ruled not to go there. So it was just really fun to see the level of excitement, and that was with only nine days worth of planning. I've already gotten their approval this year, at the beginning of the first queue, to do it again this year. But other members of the EDC said that they would like to help participate as well, so it could be. A team building exercise as well for the EDC to actually do something great in the community. So that is one of the reasons why, or a few reasons why I would like to be appointed after asking. For two years now to be appointed on this commission, so I'd appreciate the consideration.
She answered all the que, she asked if now they're having the advantage of the questions are, so they're answering them.
She said everything I would have wanted to hear. And then some.
Do you think that attracting businesses to Southwick is an important piece of what EDC does?
It doesn't do it yet. That's not part of its function.
But it shouldn't actively discourage businesses from coming to town?
Absolutely not at all, that's where I think it should cross-pollinate with other commissions. So that there can be dialogue and we can leverage our expertise on that commission. To do some due diligence, truly look at numbers and data to determine, does it make sense or does it not? So I'm for business coming into town as long as it fits within our character of our town. Which I know we're in the process of defining what that is up to our twenty-fourth.
But if someone. If someone were to to try to make a. A development more palatable. Do you think that EDC should take a stance against that?
What type of development?
Say there was a large tract of land that someone was trying to. Make smaller to avoid attracting a large commercial development. Would it be appropriate for EDC to take a negative stance on that type of of project?
Well, I don't believe the commission should take the negative or positive stance on anything. Until all the data's been delivered as to really what is the end result. And how is it going to influence not only the town character, but also the infrastructure? And also what the general public would like as well, too, so there's multiple different steps, I can't give it just a blanket answer. But I believe that they should be open-minded to what it is, and then be able to determine. How they should be perceived with whatever that development could or could not do.
Thank you. Good?
I'm all set.
Frank, Frank Brillo?
Yes.
Hey, how are you?
How are yourself?
Great.
So Frank Brillo puts you on Lakefront. Southwood. Um, been Southwood for forty-two years. I've got multiple businesses, I've visited the town here, East Granby. Uh, West Southfield. Pittsburgh. Uh, I've been a lot. I know how to run a business, and how to attract people, bring them to your business. There's this, in town here, I've noticed that there's a lot of businesses start fail, start fail, start fail. That's around the lake area. Brilliant battle. So uh, they need to uh. They need to start doing things. Have some guidance from multiple people. Help with the boards. Basically, that's not it, it's just, I've watched a lot of things, I do own the Marina. Uh, in town, uh, I've done quite a bit to the place already, it's not done yet, but it's gonna be finished. It's gonna be very nice redevelopment, trying to make it attractive. Uh, make sure businesses are doing. Well, they are. Again, there's uh, many places that are just opening up for the summer and closing. And uh, they 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 gotta operate twelve months out of the year. And there's no reason why they can't, if they do the right things, you know, I mean, I've got a list of stuff that. I believe that would go very well over there at the lake, you know, um. Unfortunately, people are going in, they're opening and taking a dive. And uh, there's been multiple, multiple places. Fortunately, people here knows who they are, what they have, what's going on. So really, really is nothing going on on the lake at all, and I'm not just concerned about the lake, but I think the lake is the hub of this town. Um. That's about it, I would like to get on the board.
Excellent, thank you. Jason?
Right, so you're basically, one of the things that you think EDC should do is basically, it sounds like to me, help navigate through the process and kind of market themselves. And see if they fit the format of the town, or what they're looking to do.
Navigate them through. This end of it, you know, also the climate, there's a lot of navigations there. I know that, because I can sit on boards and other times. You know, I just, I think business is really important. In town, and. People are looking for certain businesses in this town. You know, um. There's multiple uses over at the lake over there, multiple, multiple, and when I see empty buildings, it just, you know, it's a shame.
Can I follow up on that?
Absolutely.
So as a commission. How do you see yourselves or the commission providing that kind of guidance?
Just from, you know, what I know, uh, what, you know, the different towns I deal in, every town is different to a certain point. Some towns have strong economic development committees, some do not. Um, I I I know a few towns that they're they're strong in what they do. Uh, they're always coming out seeing, you know, how you're doing, if someone requires in a business. Uh, there ain't too much, I'm I'm not originally from town, I only been there for five years, but. I hear about what's going on, what's gonna open, what they're thinking of doing with the place, so on and so forth, so you go far. You know, uh. There was a place that was opening on the lake, um. I introduced myself to them. Talked to them, made some suggestions, but. They they were, they wanted to, and uh. I don't think they're gonna be there much longer, to be true. You know, not that I'm I'm not saying I'm Mr. I know everything, but I've been there, seen it, talked. And if if you're helping them in business, you gotta help them with the town, I definitely agree with her one hundred percent. You gotta have, you know, pay any loan involved, so on and so on and so forth. Navigate, just just navigate, bring some good, good businesses, you know, good businesses. You know, good businesses.
You talked about the other economic development commissions, Frank. Um, what do they do, the ones that are more, you said stronger, more active? What do they do that you think?
More aggressive. They reach out to you. Uh, the the guy over in in Southfield. He he didn't even know I go run businesses in Southfield, I have businesses in Southfield. I said, I'm a board. He approached me. That's good business. There's anything I can help you with, you're looking to do something else. You know, here's my card and blah, blah, blah. But you gotta be involved in it. Gotta be involved. You know?
Thank you, Frank.
Would you be in favor of business roundtables, for instance? Inviting them in someplace here, wherever?
Absolutely.
Well, you don't have a good budget, but?
One hundred percent. I can invite them to VFW. It is one hundred percent. Wherever we we would have to do it, that's it's really important. Because there are some things that people have a an idea in their head. Or it don't fit where you put it. It's not, you know what I mean? I I have one of my places up for lease right now and I've had multiple people come looking at it, different restaurants and I go it it will work here, you know? So let's just like, but I do a lot of rentals. And you know, you want it to succeed. Well, well. We're getting help. Not so easy nowadays.
Any more questions?
I'm good right now.
I guess it's the same question Doug gave. Inga, if it's a business that you don't approve of personally or as the commission, would you take a stance on it?
I would.
Or let's say, what would you do about it?
It it's not up to me to disapprove about something.
The commission?
You know what I mean? Uh, I would I would help them. I think that's a big problem in a lot of the boards, if they don't think it's a good idea, it's not gonna happen. Which I don't agree with that. Don't agree with that at all. You know, it ain't up to them to say, oh yeah, I typically need another one. No, it's not. Something to say, well, you know, it does fit, it does fit, you know, it could work.
You good? You good? There a Greg here?
Right there.
Can you pronounce your last name?
Dyley.
I knew I was gonna mess it up, so I gave you the chance to get it right. No problem, Greg.
Okay, Greg Dyley, Pennsill Road. And uh, I've been working in a direct response marketing for medium sized, couple of medium sized companies for forty-seven years now. I'm retiring this year. Half half time right now and intend to be fully retired by the end of the month and I've got a lot of skills in in not just marketing, but in financial analysis because in direct response, it's all about driving the numbers and have been responsible for maintaining tens of millions of dollars in sales and achieving the bottom line goals as well. And I've got a lot of skills in multi-year economic revenue expense forecasting, cost benefit analysis that I think can be useful. And I've also been an avid follower of the Strong Towns organization that is, you know, national in scope. And I'm a member of the Pioneer Valley Strong Towns group. Uh, that's headed up by uh, the Land Use Planner in Northampton, who's also on their planning board. And with people in Springfield and East Hampton and various places around and we meet once a month to exchange ideas. And it's all about making the towns stronger economically and better for the the people there. And it it's about not all types of growth are good. It's about growing wealth in the town. Growing, in a sense, the bottom line of the town. Because without a bottom line, you're gonna decline. If you don't have the surplus to put into maintenance and and development, the town's gonna go downhill. So I I think there's a lot of things that can be done in terms of a cost benefit analysis to answer the question, well, what position would you take? Well, if there's a business that potentially have negative impacts on a town, I would do a detailed economic analysis, cost benefit. And just say, here are here are the numbers and research and everybody else can decide. And I totally agree with Inga, the the Economic Development Commission should be an advisor to all the other commissions and particularly the the select board, FinCom, they should be a resource, an informational resource. And the best way to, I think, to get growth of small businesses in town is make sure the current small businesses, I would agree, are getting the resources they need and that if it's a good environment for business, they'll come naturally. You don't have to go out and recruit them. Uh, so I think that that's, all of those things are are keys. So any questions?
Well said. No, very well said.
I have no questions at this moment. Jason, Mr. Dyley, I'm also too. You said I like eleven.
I think you covered it pretty well. Thank you.
Amala? Wow, how'd that work? And I I again, I'm not, I don't wanna mess up your last name. Oh, I would have got that one right. All right. How are you?
I am, I live on Alcoa Road and I've only been living in Southwick for about seven years. I come to you from Ludlow, uh, where I was there for probably thirty some odd years. And while I was there, I was on the Board of Directors for the Ludlow Boys and Girls Club. I was the President of the Ludlow Chamber of Commerce. Um, I sat on the Executive Committee for the Affiliated Chambers of Commerce of Greater Springfield. Um, and I started I soap brodering in Ludlow as well. So I've been very active on boards, just not lately. So I thought this is a perfect opportunity to step in in the town that I live in now. Um, and currently I am employed by Global Thinker with a real estate company, a worldwide real estate company. Um, I am the Vice President of Marketing for four offices in Hampshire and Franklin County, although I work from home. So my background is marketing. That's what I do. I market real estate. And our brand, our agents.
I think I sounded that.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Jason?
I've read Miss Stefani's, Miss or Mrs.?
Mrs.
Mrs. Stefani's uh, resume and she spoke volumes right there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you think Southwick has a brand? You could market?
I really do. I I love this town. I say it all the time to people that I work with. I really love Southwick. I love the town. Just to say, I love the town I live in. Because I just love all the agriculture around me. And I pass cows, you know, every day. I just, I love it. I love the small town feel. I love the small stocks and the little shops. And that's where I I think my heart is is local. So I think that if we did something along the lines of buy local in Southwick and encourage our residents to buy local and shop in their family. And eat dinner here and lunch here and breakfast here and, you know, got them in shops that are here instead of going outside our town where possible.
Okay.
I'm good. Mr. Jim?
I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mark Filco?
Even.
How are you?
Doing well.
Thank you for your patience.
Yeah. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. Select board. Thank you for your service. Um, I'm a a real newcomer to the town. Been here for about two years. Uh, come to Southwick from uh, Rocky Hill, Connecticut. Um, although I've had the opportunity to work in the greater Springfield area for uh, over fifteen years, but I haven't worked in the north continental side for many years. And turning it up. I'd like to get involved with the Economic Development Commission, really for one reason. I think I have a lot to contribute to the town. Um, we love this town. We we fell in love with it and three years ago, we had the opportunity to buy a property uh, and build a home here in town. And and we loved every second that we've been here. Uh, it's a great town with a lot of great potential. Uh, we'd like to see it thrive. Uh, as a taxpayer of the town, I'd like to see the town flourish economically. It's in uh, our interest and the interest of of all the residents and businesses here to have a thriving uh, town economically. And that's where I see the role of the Economic Development Commission uh, to be. It's really twofold. It's uh, recruitment and retention of businesses that help benefit this town uh, by helping to support the the tax base, making sure that we have uh, strong um, businesses that um support the town through uh, their their payment of taxes. Uh, but it's also to help businesses uh, who are interested in coming to the town, serving as liaison uh, for the town. Uh, working with the other commissions and with town officials to uh, again, help with the recruitment of of those businesses and helping to make the town very business friendly. I think that's a big role of the economic Economic Development Commission. Had the privilege of uh, serving on the Economic Development Commission for a term when I lived in in Rocky Hill. It was uh, very satisfying work. Um, we did several very interesting things. We did a business survey, for example, for uh, existing businesses to help understand their needs and what uh, the town could do to help them. Uh, we also harnessed some of the tools that were available through the state to help support businesses. One of the things the state uh, did have was um, dollars that would help with facade renovation. And so we harnessed that program. Uh, we helped provide a grant program that supported the businesses. And uh, it was fun to be able to uh, uh, provide dollars that helped businesses through direct grants. Um, and and they had to contribute uh, in kind to those programs, but it really helped those businesses succeed and it really uh, did a phenomenal job with um, renovating uh, the main strip of of the town of Rocky Hill. Uh, making it more attractive uh, to other businesses and certainly to other residents. Also had the privilege early in my career of serving as consultant to um, uh, businesses, corporations. Um, as a tax and economic development consultant. Um, in that we um, helped corporations um, uh, work with towns during site selection as well as uh, tax um, and financing uh, options that they had working both state and local governments. Uh, so represented the corporations with the economic development incentive programs. Whether they be customized job training or um, uh, enterprise zone type um, uh, financing programs. So I really um, applaud the town for what it did with in particular Wally Computer and the tax increment financing program was placed for Wally Computer. Those are the types of things that I think the town can do um, uh, to help attract and and retain businesses. And that was a really smart move. The town's a great partnership between the town and the business uh, in that particular case. And I think that's that's a great example of what uh, the commission can do uh, in its powers uh, to help assist businesses. And then finally, um, my academic preparation was in public administration. Uh, pulled a master's degree from University of Harvard in public administration, had the opportunity of uh, teaching at the at the college level, um, public administration. So I really believe in in giving the attitude. So uh, that's why I would like to uh, participate in the range. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jason?
Uh, Mr. Filco's, again, his resume was present and I would like to listen to Mr. Filco.
Have you attended or listened in on any of the EDC meetings?
I have listened in on some of the uh, commission meetings and um, I've also read the minutes in the uh, commission meetings.
Okay. Is there one or two key things that you would like to see change or incorporated into Southwick's economy?
Um, I think the smart use of uh, the resources that the town has um, and um, uh, also helping to navigate. Uh, there were some opportunities to to uh, bring businesses into town. And again, not passing judgment on um, the the type of business, but I think that um, uh, there is an opportunity for the Economic Development Commission to uh, help the businesses in navigating some of those uh, situations and and opportunities for the town and and working with the other um, commissions and boards in um, and helping with that process.
Okay.
Okay. I wanna thank everybody for for coming out for EDC and
Can I have a reading on what I said?
You got to go first, Amber.
He's so intense. I didn't give you the whole, like, I'm only
We also had a Justin Barnett, that was his second choice.
Yeah.
Is he here?
Justin Barnett? Thanks.
Very well done.
No relation. I I think we got, yeah, what we did, um
Sir, do you mind if I put a business owner down to speak? I'm not applying to this at all.
Sure, just give me one sec. I just wanna explain one thing.
Please.
Um, one of the things we did do, Diane asked to to make a change to the original portal that we had put forth and we had people put second choice. Um, if the border commission that they had applied to was full or oversubscribed, is there a second choice that you wanted to be on? So, um in a case, take this or any board, for example, there's four spots and we had six people come out. I never wanna tell somebody, oh, thanks, but no thanks, right? Can we find a place for you? There's always a way to 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 be of service to the town. Um, so my take on it and we can, we can discuss it is if someone has a second choice on this list that's on this list, okay, we should look at it. I personally wouldn't wanna bring forward someone who had EDC as their second choice on this list when we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine highly interested, motivated folks that wanna be on this commission. And 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 someone, and this is nothing against Justin, just he wants to be on another board commission. If that didn't work, work out, he'd wanna be on EDC. And nine folks say, I wanna be on EDC first. That's how I would take it.
I I view that as other, not as second. I I don't think EDC is anybody's second.
No, but you know what I mean? That's how I look at it. Well, okay. So that's why I said I, we we probably might have some dissension.
But that's fine. He's not here, so we can have the
Any objection to having a a a business owner speak on this topic?
No.
Wonderful. Joe D, two five eight, being in those little Southwick. Make sure I was following the small business owner in this town. And probably one of the bigger nonprofits in this town.
You probably need to speak up.
Yeah, I'll speak in a minute.
You're behind everybody.
I'm getting worked up, don't worry.
You can work up, Mr. Phil.
Be careful with you guys for another layer of government and some of the business owners. I don't think that's what you're trying to do. But I hear change, change, change. I hear EDC should be more involved than they really should be. They should have been ten years ago when I came back home. And they're not. Um, like Frank said, there's there's dreams and ambitions when we were young men and we still have them. We just don't, probably wanted to, because we did. Um, but they're there. Businesses stop in my place all the time. Kids stop in my place. Someone opened businesses and I'm sure with Frank, we all talk. Because we promote, we promote everything. That's what we're supposed to do for business owners in this town. But I did get nervous when I hear it has to fit into, you know, someone's footprint when I've been to every planning board meeting. I've watched this town belittle businesses. One of them said they were gonna raid the land. We can't do that. And then come to this board and think, oh, everything's okay, because it's not, all right? We are a great little town and we're not going anywhere hopefully. We we do encourage business. It took me a year to get my permits. I did get them. I've been successful here. I have dreams and ambitions like a lot of people do, but just be careful with another layer. Our town planner's doing great. And that's where I think EDC really should be involved with, because his phone rings all the time. His stuff doesn't even trickle down to us. If you listen to planning board minutes, the beginning of, he does talk about, well, someone called for your pioneer dairy property. Well, they might think of doing this or something. The beginning of, he does talk about, well, someone called for your pine or dairy property. Oh, they might think of doing this. Or someone called for your DFW. They might think of doing this. He kind of leans them in whatever direction. He has to be clean, because he's just a wealth of information and that's his job. And that's where EDC maybe comes into play. Because then they can spearhead that bullet or that, hey, so and so called, maybe you should go reach out to those folks. Because right now I look at EDC, they don't have any information. Even today as a small business owner, and then we always look at it to expand and do different things. That's just why I do it for all of my life. I would never think of the Southwicke EDC to say, hey, what is our car count? On College Highway. I don't think they know that. Not that they should, and hopefully they will in a year from now. But I don't think they have the tools necessary to to really promote what they're trying to do. And and folks, this is, this is the Wild West. You know, there's no Applebee's coming here. There's no Trader Joe's. I assign different roles in this town. They won't even pick up the phone. So we're stuck with Frank and Joe with small businesses that maybe, that maybe do something in a, no, if you're talking you know, and there's not 10 W I computers out there. We're lucky we have the one. And they're doing great, but there's not 10 more behind it. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Lots in comments? Hopes and dreams?
I believe everyone is in agreement with what Mr. Didi just said.
Absolutely. There's no intent. I know not. I don't think this board has anything, nor does the, I don't think anyone that's interviewed, trying to put another layer or something in way of anybody coming here. So.
I do have, I do have another suggestion.
Sure.
For discussion. Um, I did ask, I did research, what the state allows five to 15 members. And I would like to change the composition of this board to five members, three associates perhaps. If we could. And if you're ready to hear a recommendation, I have them.
Uh, hang on a second.
Sure.
I don't know, chapter forty, section eight A, if it allows associates, uh, if that's how we adopted the EDC as we adopted Mass General Law.
You might just have to make them full members. That's all.
Okay.
I mean, if you're thinking about increasing the number in the law for MITU to go up to fifteen, then what would prevent you from wanting to do?
Okay, well, then we could put them all in at one year.
That's great. Well, you could start your staggering.
Start staggering.
When you do your appointments tonight, you could just say X, A, B, C for three years or five years and then just do your
Or if we do
Your laddered in approach.
Right. If we do eight, then two are at five, two are at four, two are at three. Ones at two, ones at one.
Two thoughts. One is always have an odd number of members. The second thing, trust me. The second thing is be wary and just keep it in your thought process. As you expand the numbers of a board, a quorum becomes half plus one.
Well, that's why I was thinking of associates.
But I know, but I don't think we can. And then we went through this. I just spent and I don't want to wait six months, Bert, right? I spent six plus months working with the attorney to get clarification on our own agcom, whether associates and the number in seven, which we still have the largest agcom in the Commonwealth, by the way.
Mr. Tam, and that was more of a bylaw or how we adopted locally versus the other one.
We would have to do the same thing for this.
Right, but I don't, you know.
It, we'd have to go back and do the research to see how EDC came to be in the town.
Could, you could table these for tonight and ask the attorney, is there an issue going up to seven or nine? And within that number, could X amount be based on an associate category? And then we would get that answer.
We could do that. We, it's up to the board. I, I have no, I think under the, the way I read Mass General Law, chapter forty, section eight A, I didn't see associates in it. I knew you could go to fifteen members if you wanted to. Personally, I just wouldn't want to do it. In fact, I'm going to circle back to that on high speed internet tonight is to see if we want to flush out that board as big as it is now, or do we want to scale it and make associates? But we're we're, that's an ad hoc advisory board to the select board. We could do whatever we want. So, right. So this is a statutory board, so i- if there's a, if you would like to make a motion to expand the board to X, I, I leave it to you. And we should, we could do that. I just wanted to put those two caveats up there. Obviously not eight.
Multiple number.
Yeah.
Ability to do quorums. Could go to seven.
I think seven's an acceptable number to me.
So that means you'd have to have four show up to have a meeting, right?
I mean, your ag, what do you have on the ag? Seven?
Ninety?
Conservations of seven. Right, so I'm, I'm just thinking about obviously the other boards, right? Those are probably the two largest boards.
Right.
Yeah.
But even, even uh, you know, that high speed internet, we've had a couple of times where we struggle with quorum. I get it. People are busy and there's a lot of stuff going on and we meet much more intermittently.
Right.
But let's say it was a five member and a bunch of associates and and you, you know, you could do that, but I don't think you can for this. So I, I leave it to you.
Seven?
Seven.
I'll make a motion to change this commission to seven members.
I will second contingent upon when he goes through all the legal aspects of it and where, where
And then how do you want to do it? Because you, what, the, the, this is leftover. I think we had been doing, because I'll have to read these. This is supposed to be five year appointments.
Correct.
And so the attorney recommended that we stagger these out. So uh, it was easy to do a five and four, a three, a two and a one.
So we can do two fives, two fours, one, three, one, two, one, one. Right?
Yeah, in some of the year terms, you're going to have multiple people. You've done that before with conservation.
Two fives, two fours, two threes, a two and a one.
One, three.
One, three.
One, two, and one, one.
So, got?
Okay.
Two, two, one, one, one. Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
I also, um, the only comment I'll make, just around this is that, um, we don't presume just by the nature of of policy, we don't I think we, we need to recognize the members that had served out their term on the board and that the fact that they are or aren't here tonight should I don't, I don't know if it matters a whole lot. That's just my, my take on it. You know, deeply respect the folk, you know, the contribution that folks have made um, as we go through this process.
Okay. Want to hear my suggestions?
Floor is open, absolutely.
I would put Craig Samuelson at five years. Van Coney at five years. Inga Hoteling at four years. Greg Dialing at four, at four years. Frank Grillo at three years. Pam Sclafani at two. And Mark Folco at one. And then they would just fall into the rotation thereafter.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
I can work with that. I'll second that motion.
Unusual, but as a chair, I think I have the, the the ability to set forth a motion. I think that taking three out of the five existing members off the board. Um, especially Amber and Serena. Um, who've done the work. I, I would urge you to reconsider your your motion.
I would be re- willing to reconsider my second.
Well, the floor is either open to, we either got to
My, my philosophy is this, if you're not willing
Made in second is further discussion. So is there another motion can come forward? Or we have to proceed to a vote? Am I correct, Mr. Stein?
Yeah.
I think so.
What were my options?
Your option is to is to put forth another motion, or I've asked Diane if she would consider to reconsider her motion.
I am going to put forth another motion, for the exception of my opinion is if you're not willing to show up, uh, I don't want you. So Amber and Serena, I would like to see on this board. I'm sorry, that's just my mentality. If it's important enough for you to be on this board, you should be at this board and at this meeting. And show that you're interested enough to be here. So
Craig Samuelson is in Canada on an emergency.
And man, I
Well, certainly.
Um, I'm not sure if anybody, no, in the email I received, Jack Cody. So you, if you're saying that he's, he's not here. He's been on for about a year now, I believe. He's newly appointed, he's newly appointed. Um, but I don't know, did somebody get in touch with him? Um, okay, so I wasn't
I know we reached out to every single person that's here tonight.
Okay.
Directly.
Michael, I've tried to reach out too. Um, I have.
Lisa didn't have, yeah, so.
But that's and we're just defending only because
I hear you.
For, you know
I understand.
You know, they're very knowledgeable people, but I do know that Craig, you know, is, is on an emergency, so.
Well, I guess my question to you would be, would you prefer not to be on the board for one of those members?
I don't think, um, that's tough. Michael's a very knowledgeable man. Um, he is, um,
Well, I did not put forth Mr. McMahon, so I did not put forth Mr. McMahon.
Who, who are you coming for? I'm sorry.
Mr. Samuelson and Mr. Cody, I believe, is what? Miss Gail, put forward. Am I incorrect? Well, that was for the five year term, right?
Those are for five, yeah.
I still have the mentality, it's if it's important something more than an email with just a, I want to be on it. It's not sufficient to me. I want to know why.
I base my selections on the period of time I have been following EDC and the members attendance and contribution.
Are you looking at me to defend myself or?
I'm not looking at you. I am going to stick with my second motion.
Which was?
Everyone, you, uh, let's see, not Mr. Samuelson and not Mr. Cody, I'm sorry. Uh, Ms. Bach and Mrs. Bach or Miss?
Mrs. Bach.
Mrs. Bach and Mrs. Fuller?
Miss.
Miss Fuller. Took the, the, you know, the opportunity and showed up here. To me, that's important. And I'm just going to stay with what I, my second motion was.
Again, Craig is on an emergency.
I'm just going to stick with what I, that's my
Something to do with the building going down.
Let me just clarify that, Jason. When you're saying, is that for the five year term slot?
Yes, this, so the two
They were going to move Jack.
Are out of play.
So
You'd have to figure out what your, what your seven members are and they have different terms.
So
But let's
Jason, so if I understand your motion, is Amber five, Serena five, Inga four, Frank three, Greg three, Pam two, Mark one?
Yes, that was my motion.
Is there a second? Fantastic. Lady and gentlemen, you need to figure out how to compromise. You don't want me to make a motion. Because I will.
I will switch.
You want to come back?
Four.
One of your other two.
I will.
You want another motion?
You're asking to make a
I'm asking if you want another motion, because I'll put one forth if you want it and then we can all hash this all out.
Mr. Chairman, what's your motion?
I'm negotiable on the number of, on the years. Amber, Serena, Craig, Jack, Frank, Greg, Pam, Mark.
Say that again?
I think I got that many.
Say that again?
Amber, Serena. I'm over, sorry. Amber, Serena, Craig, Frank, Greg, Pam, Mark.
Over your seven. And then Diane, what were your seven?
Craig, Jack, Inga.
Two, Craig, let's see, Craig. Okay, your second one after Craig?
Was Jack.
And the third one?
Inga.
Fourth one?
Frank. Greg. Actually, I'm sorry, Greg and Frank are backwards, sorry.
Well, that's different, for different terms.
Yeah, for different terms, yeah.
I'm just, we're just trying to figure out who choosing, then you can allocate with terms.
Pam and Mark.
And then Pam and Mark.
Again, I'm looking at those with the skills and who did the work.
So let's see, one, two, three, four, Diane and Doug agree on five out of the seven. So that's stark.
Unless we go to nine. And then we're all happy. And nine was an option.
Jason, what were yours now, just so we can go through?
Mine initially? You're Amber.
Okay. Yeah.
Inga, Frank. No, I'm sorry, um, this
You got Inga, okay.
My original?
Amber, Serena, and Inga, so this
No, my original, I'm sorry.
His original was without Jack and Greg.
Without Jack and Greg.
With Amber and Serena.
Okay. So you have Mike McMahon?
No, I didn't know.
No.
We used the original without
No, the others, the others. My original was, uh, did not include
Did not. All right, so just, I have Amber, Serena, and Inga for three. So what are your other four?
Would be, uh, Frank, Greg, Pamela and Mark.
Frank, Greg, Pamela and Mark. Okay, so right now you all agree on Mark, Pam, Greg and Frank. So that's good. So you've got those four. Right?
Give me that again.
The way I'm reading it is all three of you agree on Frank Grillo, Greg Dealey, Pamela Sclafani and Mark Folco. So four of you agree on all, the three of you agree on those four unanimously. And then we have two votes for Inga. Um, two votes for Craig. Uh, two votes for Serena, two votes for Amber, none for the chairman, Mr. McMahon. And one for Jack Cody.
You want to consider going to nine? And they have to deal with their quorum issue.
You need to put a motion on the floor if that's what your intention is. I, I, just the only thing I caution is, is that means you got to get five to go to have an actual meeting.
You can see five that will show up every single time. So I will make a motion to make it nine.
All right, so you have
What, nine?
Jason, I mean, Justin was so it'd be everybody but Mike McMahon.
Four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, you have ten.
You have ten.
Ten on the list and
Ten on the list and a second choice.
You have a motion made for nine.
For nine.
Looking for a second.
I will second the motion for nine.
It's nine members.
We need to make, take a vote to that, don't we?
Yeah, go back and do that first.
Okay. Doug Mogul, no.
Jason Perron, aye.
I am, aye.
Okay, that carries. So now, now the commission is at nine.
So now you're just going to allocate you're going to allocate the nine people to the different terms that are available starting out.
Okay.
So going to five year term, do you want to have three people? Or you're just going to spread it out more where you
Oh, so that could be two fives, two fours.
Two threes.
Three.
Two threes, right? And then two twos?
Two twos. You said a two, so yeah, and one, one.
And one, one.
And one, one. Okay, so now you have the number of members for each of the terms. So now you got to fill the terms. So who do you want to the terms. So who do you want to be?
So someone make a nomination for the two fives.
Right.
Craig and Amber.
I'll second that motion. I'm only going to write it down. I want to hear that it's passed.
I'm just trying to keep track of all the, I'm seeing tracks of all the chickens in the yard here. All right. Amber. Amber and Craig, right? For five.
Craig Samuelson.
Craig Samuelson.
Okay, Samuelson.
And.
Back. So everybody agrees on those.
Well, there's a motion. Is it seconded?
I do second.
Second it. Roll call vote. Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Diane Gill, aye.
Okay, two fours, please.
Roll call them. Okay. Okay, four-year terms, two allocations.
All right. I'll make a motion for Jack Cody and Inga hoteling for four years.
I will second that motion.
Roll call vote. Doug Mogul, no.
Jason Perron, aye.
Diane Gill, aye.
Okay, two to one roll call vote. Recorded. Three-year terms, two people.
I'll make a motion for Serena for three years and Frank Grillo for three years.
I will second that motion.
Fuller and Grillo.
Full call.
Full.
No.
No, I'm sorry.
Frank Grillo.
Grillo. Fuller and Grillo. Three years.
Motion's made and seconded?
It is seconded.
Give me that again, please.
Serena Fuller and Frank Grillo for three-year terms.
Aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Diane Gill, aye.
Okay, three nothing. Roll call, all done. Okay, two-year term, two members to be allocated.
Make a motion for Greg Diley for two years. And Pam Scolafani for two years. Am I reading the right number? Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
No.
You're not going to second that motion.
Okay, with, with, and Doug.
I will make a motion for Mark Folco and Pamela Scolafani for two years and Greg Diley for one.
Well, let's just do it with the two ones. Okay. So you're, you're thinking Folco and who?
And Scolafani.
And Scolafani.
I'll second that.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
And that leaves a motion for Greg Diley.
You might want to vote on the last.
I'm sorry. I did say that, didn't I? Diane Gill, aye.
She did?
I did.
I didn't hear you.
I didn't hear you.
Out of the gate quick.
I did. I was trying to move us along.
When's intermission?
Record.
All right, we need a one. I need a one. We need a one.
Diley for.
Saying that too, but you got to.
I thought you, I thought you had to vote on the last one. Then you make a motion for this.
Yeah, he was already doing that, but that's why we held off.
I was just trying to speed up.
Okay.
Okay. Are we good?
Yeah, we need a motion for the one year, right? Did you make that motion?
I will make the motion for Greg Diley for one year.
Second.
Roll call vote. Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Diane Gill, aye.
Man, it gets easier from here, I think.
I know. Ag comment is going to be nothing compared to this.
There's nothing you can do at this point, Kurt. All right.
Bring in the others.
Yeah.
You got to go.
Well, I want to congratulate you. You made it. I don't know if you were able to catch all that from out in the hallway.
Thank you.
We will. Town clerk's office tomorrow and then give it a day or two, then come in and get sworn in, please. Make arrangements, call up, get sworn in.
Good. Thank you all.
Okay.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Good to see you. Been a while.
I know. Been busy.
I, you know, I got two other guys on that committee. We're in the office today that I got, one of them was over here. Where'd Ryan go?
We're going to do lake management.
We're going to do lake management.
Management.
Thank you for your patience.
We're going to do those.
Okay. Lake Management has four member seats and two associate member seats to be appointed. Member terms are three years and associate term is one year. Applicants for member. And these are all current members. Michael Coombs, Norm Cheever, Scott Graves and Murph. Where's Murph?
I don't see him.
How's your chance? We can't really. We got to tell people to quiet down. Maybe a little. Just not all the way. Yeah. Open meeting law, open meeting law. All right. So were you with me up till now or you want me to repeat any of what I said? You're good. All right. So Mike Coombs, Norm Cheever, Scott Graves, Paul Murphy. Uh, this is for a three-year, uh, term. So I had entered, do you gentlemen want to speak? Introduce yourselves, say hello. Norm?
Make some popping. Hey, Norm Cheever, 100th Avenue. I'm an inactive member. We had 13 meetings. I attended all 13. I'm taking 246 live sample here to date since January 1st. Um, I'd very much like to stay on this committee.
Sir?
My name is Scott Graves. Um, my summer residence, per se, are six months on the day of the year in 535 Forest Road, West Uphill. Uh, I got on this committee only about 28 or 29 years ago and, uh, I'm still hoping to see the day when we get the canal dredging project done down to the Connecticut line.
That's another committee. We didn't get to that committee.
What's that?
That's the other committee coming next.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Well.
Okay.
Well, let's just.
Finish this committee first.
Let's just say that I've taken out how many beaver dams over the years and what have you. Uh, I do own a residential property on the south side of the lakes. Um, I own a property on the west uphill side of the lakes for many, many years as well. 1978 in Southwick, 1991 in Connecticut. And I probably got on this committee being a very active CRC member, got on this committee back in the early nineties. And I've also been the vice chair at one time during, during the timeframe. Uh, I just want to say that where I'd like to see in, in, you know, where I'd like to see lakes management committee change, uh, I'd love to see uh, it become a part-time job for somebody to actually run the launch facility. And then because nobody really on the committee all these years, nobody knocks themselves out to ever becomes the committee chairman because it's countless number of hours that Dick Reynolds puts in on that position every single week. And he probably puts an average of 20 hours a week in, in on that position. So, and not that I'm looking for the job either. Don't get me wrong. I'm not. I'm going to be 77 years of age. So, uh, but all I'm saying is it's, it's become a, a, a position, volunteer position with a ton of hours. And I think the town should consider hiring somebody to manage at least part of that, which could free up time, you know, for, for the committee to do what we do best, promote lake safety, lake quality. And you know, one, one other thing I just want to mention is that, uh, and I appreciate everybody inviting us to come here tonight. Is that for years and years and years, we always used to get a black eye out here because they say Lake Tonga Muck, you live on Lake Tonga Muck. Is it still mucky? Is it still muddy? Is it still this? It's still polluted? Is this, is that? It's taken us years to get kind of away from that stigma. What I hear now, which bothers me, uh, a whole lot is the new thing now that we get a black eye about and people are saying this. Oh, you're living there where it's overcrowded. Is this, is that? The lake is jammed up with boats, this and that. There's really no more boats on the lake than there was 20 or 25 years ago. What there is on the lake today is 336 kayaks that you could take off, off the equation because you had only 30 or 40 of them 20, 25 years ago. So even though yes, there's a ton more contumibles on the lakes today than there was. I have maybe number two on the lake in my day. Uh, and by the way, I worked at Babs when I was a kid. I worked at Saunders when I was a kid. I know every inch of all three lakes. I grew up on the South Side. So I bring the Connecticut voice to the meetings and I'm also a property owner on the South Creek side. That's my story.
The old Yogi Barrett thing. No one goes there anymore. It's too.
I inject one more thing and say I'm a business owner that started a company after being a vice president with a national company. In 1995, I started my own chemical company with two restaurants. Today we're the largest independent in the Hartford, Springfield market. And even though I've heard rumors that maybe it's a conflict of interest or things like that, uh, I sold my company back in December 31, uh, uh, four or five years ago, almost five years ago now to my son. So I have no financial interest in that. Even if we do business with many of the restaurants in the area and now we do 300 restaurants. So this little business is doing fine. My son is doing fine and he lives on the South Side or just off the South Side.
I'm also.
I'm also, I will make a motion to appoint Mike Coombs or Cheever, Scott Graves, Graves and Paul Murphy for the member seats.
Yep.
And Ken Phillips and Rick Wylott are being here. Nope. And Ken Phillips and Rick Wylott to the associate positions.
You can do that on one.
Yeah. We do whatever we want.
Yep, we made nine.
No, we can't. But no, she can do that.
I will second that motion.
I was just seeing if you're going to go along. Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Diane Gill, aye.
And thank you for all you guys do. It's thankless. We realize it. And I know I, I came in front of you guys a few times during COVID, couple of times before COVID. I try to get to as many meetings of yours that, uh, I can get to and, um, it's a big job.
I always remember one thing. We're part of, of a committee. We don't always agree with every other person on a committee.
I noticed that once or twice.
When we have a vote, it's voting as, as a committee and whatever is said from that committee, we go forward.
Yep.
So I'd like to think I can speak for Norton, for all of us. I'd like to think in the last 28 years that we've done a whole lot of good for the town.
I think you have too. And I think part of the interesting thing for me on lake management is, is going to be recruitment.
Yeah.
Going forward, right? To continue to, to, to continue on the great work that's been done and being done on that board.
You want to do the canal vote, John?
Why not?
Lake Management Canal has two member and one associate seat to be appointed. The member term is three years and the associate is one. And the applicants are, do I have it right? Michael, E. Michael Coombs, current member. Scott Graves, current member.
So you wouldn't, you still wouldn't have an associate then?
Serena, where's the chart? Does anybody have the chart?
No, I do not.
The Michelle Hill.
Sure. Uh, canal's not on this, though.
All right. We'll come back to Lake Management Canal associates at a future date. But for now, we can.
Yes, it is. I'm sorry. She has, um, Scott Graves.
As associate?
E. Coombs.
Member, member, associate, WK Wild.
K. Phillips.
That's right. Do I have it backwards here? Oh, it says current, oh, sorry. Current member, E. Michael Coombs.
We just don't have a.
You don't have a candidate for associate.
Listed.
Okay. So we will have to come back and post it on a future agenda to correct that oversight. But I'll take the.
Well, we need people to apply to be on it.
Did somebody apply to be on it and I missed it? Or there's no.
That's what I'm saying. We're not going to post it till we have someone apply.
Got it. I thought I missed what on the agenda.
Is this person?
Coombs and Graves.
Active? WK Phillips?
Yeah.
Is this person not active?
There he is.
On the canal.
If you still remember. Keep, keep in mind, the canal committee has been inactive now for, for quite some time because it was all about if we ever got funding to do something with the canal. I hate to say it. I can't remember if I was a regular member or associate member before. I think I was a member. I was one of the two. I just don't remember.
Well, I think it all depended upon people's schedules. Like for a while there, when people were going to Florida, we were flip flopping them. And that was, that was getting very hot to track.
Well, but now we have the hybrid stuff. So we're much more flexible than we used to be. But we'll come back to that appointment. And I, I would like to keep that active, especially in light of recent meetings in the last two months. Right? That there actually is.
Keep our fingers.
Light at the end of the tunnel and it might not even be a train, right? So, yeah.
We just got to work.
So let's take that promotion here for Lake Management Canal as read.
So that's three, nothing, right?
We didn't vote yet. We're going to probably get a vote now.
I will second the motion, yes.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Diane Gill, aye.
Okay.
And we'll come back for the associate.
Yes.
At a later date.
At a later date.
Okay.
Sewer Implementation Commission, three open seats for a term of one year and we had two people apply.
If Zaga had left that board and.
Correct.
And it was dormant, essentially dormant.
Correct. So we have, we, and one member is, uh, it's listed as a member, but he's a permanent member as a DPW director. So that's an additional one. But so, um.
Well, since it's ad hoc, it's got to be done this way. It's not under a bylaw where you're listed as a permanent member like I am under Capcom.
Correct.
It would be spelled out specifically.
Okay. But it was, we didn't. All right. We'll just do these two tonight then, because it's what we posted.
You'd have to, otherwise you wouldn't have an, uh, a functioning committee.
Correct.
And if it's a separate person committee, right?
And we did contact Freda and Jerry.
We have lettuce from, from. We did.
Yep, from both. Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. So I'd entertain a motion to appoint, uh, Jerry Patria and Frida Brown.
I will make the motion to appoint Jerry Patria and Frida Brown to the Sewer Implementation Commission.
Second.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Diane Gill, aye.
Okay. Is there anyone out there for high-speed internet? That's, I know I saw Ian. And I know, I know we used to and we're going to come. I did. There's some folks out in the hallway too. So guys, when we get into this, this is one I wanted to bring up for discussion.
Mr. Chandler, just going back to SAC, I mean, so you're, you mentioned the, the terms and you have Freda and.
Jerry.
Jerry here, but you really still have to list.
Then we have to, then we should post it and carry it out our next meeting to make the appointment. I don't want to, I don't want to.
Oh, because it's not in the, okay.
I will absolutely do it. It said on the list, it said permanent member, but if it is an ad hoc advisory, okay.
Right. Oh. Cause he's listed as lifetime or something.
It says lifetime or permanent appointment. I know. So we'll, but we, we'll carry it on the next agenda. He's coming in anyway. So we can ceremoniously appoint him to the sewers.
Yeah, it'll be carried forward, but they're not going to met by then anyway.
No, I'm pretty sure not. Yeah, they do. Yeah, right. Exactly. We'll, we'll flush that out. All right. So for your consideration as a board, uh, this is also an ad hoc advisory subcommittee reporting to the select board with a term of one year. Currently it was appointed at nine. And we often ran into issues with trying to draw a quorum of five. So I have no objection to continuing on. I would object, however, to making it larger. Just, um, so we, we need to do a couple of things. Right?
Making it larger is not going to work.
It ain't going to work. So, but I want to, I want to do two things. One is we need to have a select board appointee to, uh, high-speed internet stuff, because that has not been done. So I'd entertain a motion first and then have some further discussion depending on the outcome of that vote.
I will make a motion to appoint Chairman Mogul to the High-Speed Internet Committee.
Our expedition.
And if you said me, I was walking out, so.
You're already on other stuff. You've already been put up.
The second?
That was the second, yes.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Sure.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay. So I have no problem if we continue to nine or if we want to reduce that number, but I want to make it very clear. There's been a lot of people that have come out to offer to be a part of this endeavor. And regardless if the board was three, five, seven, nine, or 61, we'll have a key number. Uh, it would be my intent.
Now that 12 names, you've got 12 names.
My point is whoever gets appointed or not appointed, this will be a round table type of meeting. So there, there's, oh, thanks. There, I just want to, I don't want to turn anyone away from this endeavor. There was a lot of folks that applied that want to be involved in this thing. And I want to have anyone who wanted to, to be involved, be involved. And so if, if I don't want to increase the, the board much larger. And in fact, my, my consideration would be to reduce it. But that being said, we would run this. It's, it's an ad hoc advisory board. There's no statutory authority.
Of associates.
And we can have associates, my point. Thank you. And which means that if. And which means that if we had five and. Five associates, or what do we got, twelve out here? Five and seven? Great, we could do it that way too, right? And that way you only need to have three to have a meeting. And you could have all your associates show up too. But if, and if twelve people show up, great. But I just think it'd be expeditious to move this thing forward. We are gonna start to, um, the board's gonna wanna get into start meeting with vendors. And potential, um, providers and to start moving that work along and sending stuff back to the full, uh, select board. Cuz that's the contracting and authorizing authority.
So you would have to clarify if you create associates, whether they'd be voting or non-voting associates, cuz.
I would put that to the board and I'd also put it, I, I wanna put it to the floor because there's a lot of folks in this room that have reached out to me or applied direct to be on this committee. And there's. A good chunk of the board that's on the sub tonight, that's been with us from the very beginning. And I'm also extremely, extremely proud, I'll say it a thousand times, when this board first started. Or, sorry, advisory committee first started, every single person on that sub had never served on a board or commission in the town of Southwick. Which was kind of a cool thing. So, and there's folks that have applied that have also never served on a board or commission in the town of Southwick before. I want that involvement as we move into this endeavor. So. I wanna open up, if it, if it pleases the board, I would like to take any feedback from current members or anyone who's applied to be on the member with thoughts on my proposal. Which is.
Some of them remote, Mr. Chairman.
Probably. And if you are an applicant on here, please feel free to raise your hand and we'll come back to you and.
Tom Collick.
Yep, Tom.
Yes.
Yep, okay, so my proposal is to go to, what do we think, five and seven or seven and five? If there's, how many applicants do we have?
Twelve.
Twelve? I have no issue with that, but I'd like to have some discussion from the floor first. Young lady.
I would like to begin by saying. Uh, that I contacted. The Board of Selectman Office before there ever was a committee. And my name was actually placed down as someone who was interested in high speed internet coming to town. And I think that was two years before we actually started meeting, I Marlene Quinlan.
I was gonna interrupt you, so thank you for doing that.
And. My interest was in looking at the town and what we needed infrastructure wise to make us thrive. And I think we need a lot of things in town, but high speed internet is something that has, and since the pandemic, it's been established. So I have been. I think my attendance was.
Really good.
Very good. Um, I don't, I'm not even sure I really ever missed a meeting. I attended some that we didn't have a quorum or couldn't meet. But, um, my attendance has been excellent. Um, I have lived in town for forty-five years, so I'm not new to Southwick. Uh, I am an elder in Southwick, but I still am employed, uh, as a oncology social worker at Bay State Medical Center. Um, so I do have a very interest in people getting what they need. That's my main motivation for being on this committee. All that being said, I am happy to be an associate. I would like to be involved, but I don't feel like I need to be a full member. Um, but I, I think at the beginning, we really started at the ground level, putting things together. And a lot of it was kind of researching, like what was out there. Um, so we did a lot of that groundwork, I'm very happy to be involved. I want to continue to be involved, but I want to help the committee move forward.
Great.
So I'm happy to be an associate, if that helps, cuz I see you have. I don't know what the new people have to offer, I'm not a computer tech person. Uh, but I'm a people skills person and. And I, I can research things and I certainly give all my effort to the committee.
Anyone else wanna speak? On this issue? Mr. Peace.
Ryan Pease, one eighty, Mark Vining Road. Um, I think ultimately, whatever is going to be the fastest and most effective way to have these meetings. I think reducing the committee size seems that would be easier to have enough people show up. Um, especially probably quorum, if that makes sense, I would like to see associates. I think, um, having input from. Technical people, uh, in the process would be helpful. For non-technical people on the board, make sure that we're getting what we're looking for. So that's my opinion.
Mr. Vice Chairman?
Ian Crasswell, Southern Penn Drive. Yeah, I, I agree, however, it makes the most sense to do it so we can actually have a meeting and be productive. Um, I, I, I think that's great, if we downsize it a little bit, I do think we're gonna bring on associates, why not have them have the ability to vote? Um, so they get the full input along with the rest of the board, so it can still be a forum and maybe get some things on. Well, it's not what he meant. No, no.
Mr. Jason.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, uh. I'd be fine being an associate too, um. I haven't been to the last. Two meetings, I believe, but that's because I have personal issues with, uh, damage to where I live right now, so. I'm having issues with that, but, uh.
Understood.
But I'd be perfectly fine being an associate as well if you guys wanted to get like five and seven.
Okay. Would anyone else like to speak on this?
Chris Lloyd.
Yes, Chris, how are you?
The committee set the very beginning.
You have.
And I would like to, uh, stay on as a full time. I have missed, I think I missed the last meeting, I never got the email, but on that, I think I made more carry than you.
Yep.
Can I just add one thing? I think there was a problem with email notification.
There definitely was a problem with email.
And, uh, and when the address was changed, dot gov. Um. A lot of emails that I was getting about anything was, went to spam. And that, and it's still going to spam even though I've changed. Well, it was the last time.
It's like a long winter.
Yeah, so I, I know that, um, just the other day, there was something with spam and I moved it out of spam again, even though we corrected corrected the address and everything, so. So some people might not be getting notified.
I hear you.
We know that.
We're working on that. Mr. Johnson.
Yes, I've been, um, um, I am. I've been on the board since the inception, I'm the seventh, I've been out of. And, uh, part of looking at subject becomes secured. And, uh. And I guess. I live on the internet, I mean. And, you know, I don't, I, I just can't function without the internet. And, uh. Uh, and it's been my life ever, ever since computers became part of our lives. And so, uh, it's, I really need it because. It's a dog and pony show out there right now. And, you know, we need some professionalism, something that will snap and punch. And, uh, and we're working, and this committee is other members working towards them. And, uh, I still want to continue to be part of that. And I'll take any role you give me, but I'll be part of it, I want to be part of it.
Much appreciated. Would anyone else like to speak on this issue, sir?
Uh, Jim Crowley.
Hi, Jim.
Uh, I might be one of the committees, I haven't served on a committee previously in town.
You have or have not?
I have not.
Perfect.
But, uh, I've been aware of some of the activities of the committee over the years, um. Like to thank everyone who's been able to spark forward as they have. Um, I spent my whole career in telecommunications and I'd like to turn that feedback and offer to the committee, whether it's, uh, in a subcommittee or the associate member or full time member.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yep, Tom, Tom Colick here.
Yep.
So I've been in telecommunications my whole career as well. Um, in the last, from two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-two, I was involved with eighteen of the, uh, Hilltown's fiber build out projects, uh, done with Whip City Fiber. Uh, I did a lot of the engineering for them, for the, uh, passive devices within the hub sites, um. Review of design, uh, callouts on design. Um. Uh, fiber testing, uh, results review, callouts on that. So I, I feel that I can help out there, associate member would be fine with me. Um. It's pretty much it. In a nutshell.
We got everybody?
I also have word Bob Lloyd will obviously want to reapply and win.
We did. We got him on here, right? We had a compliment of voice, unrelated. Yes.
He would speak if he could, we have, but he's away.
We don't, if I could.
Fair thing.
They're telling me about the process. The email we got. And I presume, and I presume it looked like the email that most everybody got, not this on the internet committee, but everybody. It said nothing about. The need for your personal attendance, and that's become kind of one of his cutting threads here.
Good point.
So, next time around, make sure everybody knows the ground rules before you begin enforcing them. What I want.
Thank you. Okay. So. Right? We need to come up with. Five and seven. Or seven and five.
We're just gonna wait until you figure out who they are, right?
I would just like them all to be voting, however you classify them.
So, didn't, did we vote on that already? Or do we vote on the size of the committee?
Nope.
Let's do that, someone send me a motion for the size of the committee and, and if the associates can or cannot vote.
And this is gonna be an even number.
My suggestion is gonna be even, no, it's either gonna be five members, seven associates, or seven members and five associates. That's gets us to twelve, that's, but it's seven and five, so.
Five and seven.
I will make a motion to do five full members, seven associate members.
All voting?
All voting.
Second.
Doug Mogan, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Dan Gill, aye.
Okay, someone send me a list of members. Please.
You do realize that when you hold a meeting, you know, you're just, but let's see then, so. And any of the seven that show up. Two of them will be the voting members if there's only three full members there. To get you to the five.
We did five and seven, you need to have three members show up to have a meeting. Period.
Right, so you're not, you're not, so you don't wanna. If people show up, you're not gonna use two of the seven to get you to the five quorum. You'll just use the same five, okay?
Correct.
So we know that the Mogan is the, and the select board rep, he's one of the five.
Correct.
So you're looking for four. Full members. And then the rest just automatically become the associates.
Can I make a recommendation?
Please do.
So here's my recommendation, but I need a, a motion to come from the floor.
Yep.
So I think I need to be a member as a select board appointee. And then Chris Boyd. Current vice chair, Mr. Creswell. Mr. Colick. How am I doing?
Good, so far.
And Mr. Crowley. And the rest shall be associate members. With full voting rights. That's my suggestion, do as you wish.
I'm going to rely on your expertise in this area. And as you stated, so you said Mr. Boyd, Christopher Boyd.
Yeah, be specific on the Boyd's here.
Yeah, Christopher Boyd.
Ian Crasswell.
Ian Crasswell, Tom Colick, Jim Crowley as the full members. We divorce him.
And then the rest, we can rate, name him off as, well, name him off in the motion as associate.
Justin Barnett, Ryan Pease, Jason Jagair, Marlene Quinlan. Mr. Johnson, Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, and Jessica Bishop.
Well, I'm sorry, I missed you, sir. And Jessica Bishop as the associate voting members. Voting associate members, or you wanna go?
You got twelve?
You got twelve? I think he's got twelve.
Yeah, the panelists.
Emotion? I'm pretty sure we do, and the minutes will show twelve, I assure you.
Oh, yeah. That's what we didn't have.
Very good.
Is that a second?
That was, yes.
Okay, Doug Mogan, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Dan Gill, aye.
Anyone agree? Okay, thank, uh, all right. Thank you very much, and really, I think this is gonna be great, this is, we really wanna move this forward. Uh, for anyone who got appointed tonight, or especially those that just got put on the high speed internet, stop by the town clerk's office and get sworn in. Because you can't act, and I wanna schedule a meeting for next week. So you can't act until that's happened, even if you were on the board before. Because now that a subsequent appointment's been made, your term just expired.
So after Monday, get sworn in, or after the next meeting?
Well, I wouldn't go tomorrow morning cuz she doesn't know what we did yet, but yeah. And I gotta write it out for her, cuz believe me, I've made a mess of everything, oh, yeah, no.
Yeah, there's another person listening to the meeting who's, we're gonna go over the list and we'll transmit it to the clerk's office, so they know.
Yeah.
Who's gonna be calling them. So we're not even done, we have other.
And we got, we got, we got two to go. All right, we're in the home stretch now. Where's Bert, cuz I'm, or you wanna come up here, cuz I'm gonna need your help.
Thank you, Al, thank you.
Thank you all for coming in.
Absolutely, so by way of a little bit of explanation for those that are following along at home. Uh. This, there's been a couple of adds, moves and changes on this board, we had to reach out to town council. And so this process has taken way longer than, um. Longer than it was supposed to. And then, as I read the, the stuff from the portal, Mr. Mr. Hanson let me know that there's still some additional shuffling to go on. That being said, everybody's. Names on here are on this agenda, so I think we're okay. And there's, it was updated in the agenda with the amendment today, so I think we're in good shape, so. Just make sure, check on me as we go. Agcom has three member seats for appointment. Two seats are for three years and one is for two years due to a resignation. Still good? Someone's gonna help me with Tammy's name, cuz I don't wanna mispronounce it.
But Silvian? I'm not even.
Okay, we'll go with Tammy, would like to transition to an associate member. Okay?
Yes.
Dan Cook is a current member. Sage Fury is a current associate and has applied to become. So we need to move Tammy off of this list that we're talking about right now, okay? Dan Cook, Sage Fury, Zach Barnett is a current associate and looking to become a full member. Yeah, or as, as he puts it, a real member. Well. And I see Zach over there smiling, even though I don't have my glasses on, I can see him smiling from here, okay? Angela Simone has applied to become a member and Jessica Whitmore Parker is applying. To be an associate. And Lucas Karen, I'm coming to you. Had also applied to be a member. And then there was some queries, and I just wanna put it to the board, cuz I don't know if everyone saw the emails this afternoon on this. There was a query back in December, which, um, was just redistributed today, whether, um. A person who is not a registered voter by virtue of their minority.
Yeah.
Of being under the age of majority, could be on, yeah, I've really butchered that sentence, he's under eighteen. Um, could be on a, a voting board. So I'll leave that to, and the, the, it's an appointed board in the town of Southwick, it's not elected, so we're pretty much on our own. Yep, so.
I just a quick comment on Lucas, I talked with him the other day and, um, he just turned seventeen. And he's already looking forward to being able to be on the Agcom when he does turn eighteen.
Yep.
So he's probably okay, you know, status quo.
Okay.
So.
Okay, so.
They're not taking any action on this.
So, well, I'm.
Been waiting until.
I'm waiting, so we're waiting till they.
Well, just, let me, we have three member seats for appointment, okay? There's more than three people on this list, so. Well, just let me, we have three member seats for appointment. Okay, there's more than three people on this list, so we're going to have to figure that out. And I just want to, so for those playing along at home, Tammy, we're going to move Tammy down to the associate line here. Okay, so as I see it now, check my work, Dan Cook. Sage Fury. Zach Barnett. Angela Simone. And Lucas Karen are your. Applicants for this position. Okay.
Yes, there's three slots, right?
And there's three slots, so you got.
What, aren't there four? Because Tammy is, oh, oh, wait, also Lenita Bober wants to. She's not listed. Yeah, so that's not implied. Okay, I think.
I have four people here, right? And there's two seats for three years, one is three seats.
Yeah. Did we list people that weren't up for reappointment and to be acted on here on this?
I don't believe so.
Okay, so if you've got current member.
I don't think that Lenita Bober was up.
No, she wants to make a change.
Yeah. Let's come back to that then at a different date and time because we did not post it on this agenda.
Right.
And it was.
No. What do you mean?
At a thousand.
Excuse me, I'm already confused.
Okay, so you have two seats for three years and one for two years. So there's three seats and you have one, two, three, four. Five. Candidates, correct? Dan Cook, Sage Fury, Zach Barnett, Angela Simone and Lucas Karen. So.
You also have. Jonathan Thornton also.
I don't have my.
Oh, yeah, yeah, he had his, as a back.
Bernier has also, we can debate whether it's second fiddle or also.
It gave me a heart attack. I thought I just missed it completely. All right.
Weren't they supposed to still be listed?
It was, I, I was, I guess we have a difference of opinion on what that second thing meant. So. We're going to have to revisit that and discuss it for next year. And then she's right, and if we, if. I, we didn't really post it here. If you want to have that come back, we can carry this to another meeting because we'd have to carry their names on this agenda. I didn't on the other one.
The chair's preferred candidates, correct?
Who is?
Jennifer Bernier.
You don't have her.
Was she one of your?
Yeah, I haven't actually, I have not actually talked with her and I, as I understood it, she. Wanted to be on conservation or ag.
Applied to, okay, all right, so.
And there's a Jonathan.
Thornton.
Thornton on Concom. He had applied.
Okay. Did I miss him?
And he's missing that.
I wasn't aware of that.
No, I have him on.
Oh, he was on there, but not now. He fell off.
He wasn't on the agenda?
He was on the original. He's not on.
On the amended agenda?
Correct. It fell off somehow.
Really? Between Thursday and today?
Yes, he did. Yeah.
We'll see. Oops. Yeah, well. I don't think that qualifies him because he's not on this, the amended one. He's on the original one. So. I would just consider that a scribbler's error. The intent was to have.
All right, but let's get back to Agcom.
All right, so we take Jennifer out of Agcom. Out of town.
Okay, yes.
This time around.
Yes.
So.
Okay.
I believe at this time, I'm looking for if you guys want to make it an omnibus motion or you want to do, you want to. Make this more convoluted. And I want the chair to weigh in because he had his. You know, the chair had communicated to me his, his thoughts, obviously, and he's the current chair and he. We should take that information if it's available. So, and he's been. Very patient as an advocate for Agcom as we went through all these trials and tribulations. So. Where do you have this? Laying out in your opinion?
So if we have the three. Commissioners are full members. Who refer a three-year term and one for a two-year term.
Right.
So. I think that should be, you know, Dan Cook, Sage Fury and Zach Barnett. And we could go. Three, three and two.
So Cook would be three year?
Yep.
Derry would be three year?
Yep.
And Barnett?
Barnett, too.
Would be two years.
And then. At the same time, can we make Tammy? Angie Simone and Jessica Whitmore Parker, associates. And what would be those terms? Just one year? Those are one.
Those are one year. Let's, let's cover the member seats first, then we'll come back to the associates if that's okay.
Want you more than?
Well, yes, I'd take a motion for that.
I will make a motion for the three member seats. For Dan Cook, Sage Fury and Zachary Barnett. Do, do you want the years too, Mr. Turner? Yes. Okay. Daniel Cook for three, Sage Fury for three and Zachary Barnett for two years.
Second.
Roll call vote. Doug Moglen, aye.
Jason Corone, aye.
Diane Gale, aye.
Done. Okay.
And you want to get both for associates? All right. I would make a motion to appoint. I don't think I can get names right here. Tammy. Bithion.
Bithion.
Basilian.
Basilian.
Angelina Simone and Jessica Whitmore Parker as associates to position to the Agcom for one-year terms.
I'll second that, Diane Gale.
Checking something.
Yeah, I can see that.
Okay.
We're at well called out again.
Yeah. So it's Jessica Whitmore Parker. Tammy.
Mm-hmm. Angelina Simone.
And Angelina.
Yep.
And I, I can't actually say Jessica without saying Jessica Whitmore Parker, having served on the impact with her for the last forever. Should we have done those individually? Aye.
Jason Corone, aye.
Diane Gale, aye.
Woo-hoo!
I was going to bring some champagne, but I just.
Yeah.
And then just to kind of a footnote, when we had a subsequent meeting, we can. Uh, move Lenita Bober to associate.
Yep.
And which would free up a commissioner.
She needs to resign, right? What it should be.
Oh, okay.
Right? And then it technically creates a vacancy and then we can fill the vacancy. And then please come back to us, Bert, whether you want to move an associate. To a member or you want to take applications for a new member.
Right.
Okay. It's a statutory board. We have, we can do it either way.
Right.
But.
That should.
Yeah. Other than that, Mrs. Lincoln, how was the? It shouldn't be a big deal, he says.
So he has to resign as a member, apply to be an associate, and then you have.
And a letter would do, would, would do. And we, we would, and.
You could do all those actions in one single.
One single letter.
Yeah, okay, right, okay. And that's not something she should do on the portal?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. One letter, okay.
That form's not there yet.
The, I'm resigning, please. No, that, we haven't done that part yet. We're working on it though. Good Lord. All right, thank you very much.
One and all.
We done, Dave?
Oh, sure.
Place closes at nine. Concom has three opens, so Conservation Commission, sorry, I'm not allowed to speak in abbreviations. Conservation Commission has three seats open, two seats for three years and one seat for one year due to a resignation. I have that right? Okay. Applicants. I'm going to ask Mehmet, how do you actually pronounce your name? Because I've heard you were on board. One more.
Mizan Bolu.
Mizan Bolu, okay.
Silent G.
Okay.
No, you haven't.
No, that's why I asked because I've heard it 100 times in 100 different ways. Norm Cheever, so Mehmet is a current member. Norm Cheever is a current member and the vice chair of the Conservation Commission. Brian, and the other applicants include Brian Pranka, Jennifer Bernier. Charles Sclafani, Christopher Pratt, Dennis Clark and Angelina Simone.
And Jonathan Thornton.
And Jonathan Thornton. And due to a Scribner's error, he was left off the amended agenda, but he was on the original agenda. So we are going to. Scribner him back right onto the list.
Mr. Chair, I may. Dennis Clark was here, had to leave due to sickness. So he will not be here this evening.
Okay.
He's still interested for consideration.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm glad to see him.
Okay. Yeah, the floor is yours. We'll go from the top. Sir.
Whatever you say.
Whatever you'd like.
Think. I don't know, the math is kind of fuzzy, but I.
Been a while.
I paid 21 years. On the board. I think we, I tail off right around the time Chris came on. Began with Open Space. On ironically infringement that Dennis came to our door about and my reply to him was. Flag me for them and said, would you like to join the Open Space? So I was cleaning up a little too much along the Miller Road end of the thing that we had and it was debris. But somebody reported I was cutting trees and such. So, um, true story. So, um, this, but I wrote a long letter saying, wouldn't even dream of it. Uh, landowner, et cetera, not in this town, but the other places, the, um, big wetland enthusiasts and all the rest of it. And then they said, why don't you join the space? So that's how it started. And then there was an opening on Concom. Been there ever since. Enjoy it thoroughly. I think we do great things for this town. Um, we keep an eye out on things. Uh, we review things just leave. There's a very huge collaborative effort amongst us always. Um, we do site visits when we're not sure. Uh, we have to keep put eyes on it. We do that. I mean, we go to the extra length every time. Um, I think it's a valuable commission. And I would love to contribute to it. I've enjoyed it all the one year or so, so.
So you enjoy 20 of your 21 years?
I did 21 years, I did 22. I, because, yeah, my son was eight months old. I didn't even have a daughter yet and now they're 21, 22.
There you go.
So somewhere in there, you know? Um, yeah. Been a lot of years.
Interesting. I like how, hearing how people end up getting involved in these things in the. It's always, it's always usually an interesting.
You can never put a jail.
I went, I went to a planning board meeting to find out where was my street 25, 6 years.
22 years, they still rank my name and you can see, so, but I mean, it's, yeah, but it's been, it's been really horrible.
Absolutely.
I wouldn't mind continuing.
Awesome. You again.
Norm Cheever again. One of Berkshire Avenue. I'm the newest member. Appointed last August for a one-year term. And we had 16 meetings, I'm attending 16 meetings. I took four conservation classes last fall. I intend to take four more this year. Then on 16 site visits. Kind of a litter bug. I've gone litter pickup at the George and Safonowskis and Lupinski's. And 11 times on North Pond. I'm probably one of the reasons why you haven't heard much grief this year about the condition of North Pond. People go in there and bring out two bags full on the area. Also, I headed up the volunteer group to, uh, seed grass at the entrance of North Pond. And it has grown and three times I've been out there to weed whack it down so that it looks presentable. I'm a worker. I enjoy what I do and I'd like to stay on.
He's really good with charts and graphs too, by the way. I've seen him in action on the master plan. Brian Pranka.
Brian Pranka, 93 South Loomis. I was an active commissioner, commissioner for over five years. My attendance was almost 100%. I had a change of life issue. I, uh, my wife got flipped. I started missing meetings, so I resigned 13 months ago. Since then, I retired from corporate America. Combined households and got married. I understand the committee. I understand what it takes to be a commissioner. I'm ready to get back to be an active member of Southside Conservation Commission. I continue to address the, and continue to address the issues given for.
Is Jennifer here or online? Charles?
I was Sclafani, Find Alco Road. You got my wife, Pamela.
Oh, I thought it was just a weird coincidence.
She just couldn't leave after her.
I'm a practicing attorney. I have a lot of experience in municipal law and other areas of law. I was a town attorney, uh, two times, the town of Agawam. One of my roles as associate solicitor was, uh, attorney for the Conservation Commission. Uh, I also was the town prosecutor when I started out practicing. They don't have those anymore. But there was a time, four towns had town prosecutors. Everyone in district court. Yeah, you do bench trials and you, you know, OUI cases, it's all banner cases. Um, as associate solicitor, I dealt with a wide variety of matters. I did that twice. I did it back when Sue Dawson came there the second time in Agawam. And I was associate solicitor then. So a lot of experience with trial work, uh, jury trials, bench trials, federal court, state court. Also dealt many other issues in that practice, including bankruptcies and simple domestic. So a lot of areas of law. I've done this for 36 years. I certainly dealt with issues in the Wetlands Protection Act. I think I got one 1640, tried cases involving individuals who had nothing, it was their property to do what they want with it. Uh, they didn't understand, you know, and sometimes those were actually having a good trial and I dealt with those cases in Supreme Court. Well, they just filled in their backyard. They didn't understand by their zones, didn't understand permitting. So. You know, we've been living here since 2016. I've been being here a long time. Raised my kids there for 22 years. Uh, so. It'd be nice to participate in the town. We like the town. We have a, a pontoon boat in North Pond. So we enjoy all the things you've done. As we're docked in Northland. So we, uh, we spend a lot of time on the bike trail and, and, uh, leisure time on a pontoon boat, spending our time around town. So a lot of experience, a lot of areas of law, a lot of trial experience. Certainly dealt with the Conservation Commission later.
I, I, yeah, we got to come back for, should we go through everybody and then go back for questions? Because I kind of been rushing a little bit. I apologize.
Okay, I just wanted to know how we're going to do it.
That's probably the best way. That's all right, would you? Because I went to the first, okay.
I'm fine with that.
Mr. Pratt. How are you?
Very well, thank you for.
Good to see you.
As you know, I've been involved with conservation in South Lake proper over 20 years in the men, like you said, I came down about the same time. Probably 21 years ago in that nation. It's 22 now. But, um, I, I was the chair for proudly. But, um, I, I was the chair for probably eighteen of those years. So I'm more aware than, than what has been going on in town, uh, players in town. I had a lot of experience with that, it's been found, but also state, um, at the state level, I helped to write grants for land preservation in town. Um, and, uh, open algae property, and I also helped work on the, uh, property at North Pond. Um, and also Lupinski property as well, I was involved with a little bit. Um. So I'm very committed to being part of Conservation Commission, you know, I've been tendence, uh, almost a hundred percent over those twenty-something years. Um, it's rare that I've ever missed a meeting. Um. I'm very involved, not like just open with, uh, conservation, but open space, community preservation, um. I'd like to see the town remain its rural character as well as allowing, uh, development in the way that it should be developed. Um, I'm not here to not develop town. I'm here to make sure it's done responsibly. And the Weapon Protection Act is here for all of us, we need to help um, save our water resources, not just for us, but, um, wildlife as well, uh. As everybody knows, we have a huge ecosystem that we all depend on, it's not just for our own sake, it's for the world's. But hopefully you can see where I'm coming from, and it's not for personal gain or anything else, it's something I've been interested in all my life. Um, I was an environmental education educator. And that was partly why I started going into conservation, uh, one of my cohorts recommended that I do that. Started that a long time ago, um. Did all the trainings, uh, Holy Cross, well-versed in the laws. Um, worked with District Rider, uh, the State Lipid, uh, DEP. To understand different things that are here in town, going over mapping, different layers of the maps that we can look at to understand the different resource areas that we have in town. Um, so I'm well aware of what we have here in town, and the, this is all, and it's nice to see new faces as well, um, I encourage new faces, but it's also good to have people who aren't familiar with what this town works.
Thank you. Dennis Left. Sure, yes. Angelina Simone, I see you online.
Yes, hi, Angelina Simone, Ten Cedar Street. Um, I'm kind of a newbie to Town Hall, as you can see, I just got appointed as an Associate Member to the AgCom. Um, I, that's my first commission, committee in town. Um, I am a teacher, I have a minor also in environmental science from Westfield State. And I just am really involved in conservation and also want to educate Southwick more about our conservation here locally. And I think I could bring a new and different perspective to the committee since I am new, um, to Town Hall, um. And if, if I'm not chosen, I just want to say, if I'm not chosen for the Conservation Commission, I would love to serve on the, um, Open Space um, Subcommittee. Thank you.
I didn't see Jonathan. Here tonight. Or online.
I did not. You know.
Okay. Now, questions? Do you want to answer them serially, individually, however you want to do it?
Randomly.
Sure.
Um. Mr. Sclafani, thank you for applying, um. What makes you choose conservation as your foray into town?
Well, looking at all the boards and all the opportunities here, that's something I've done in the past. I, I've worked with the Conservation Commission, I've done with the issues in depth. I've worked then, my firm is in West Springfield, I'm partner in the local of West Springfield, Johnson's Sclafani, we've been there a long time, we do a number of things, uh. Chris Johnson is my partner.
No, I got an idea. Never mind, I'll come back to it.
Okay, so look, I'm recognizing, so it, it's something I've done in the past, and I've dealt with the, the town, and as I said, two states working as town attorney. Um, so, experience doing that, because I look at the boards, they're available, let's see, the next one.
Okay, I'm done.
I'm good.
You have no question?
Hardest problem we're gonna have is making selections of it.
Yes.
All these X and, I mean, I can't. You know, we talked about last year not having, so, so, this has been the hardest thing for me to do. This year's, there's so many qualified candidates and excellent candidates. For everything that's come in front of me, this has been I've wanted to beat my head against the desk. So.
Wait till the meeting's over.
You might want to do it after the meeting, but, so I'm all set, there's no questions.
I, I do, I have one for Brian, um, because Brian, and I appreciate your candor.
Thank you.
Um. Because I mean, that, I think that was my, my concern here, and I think you addressed it, I just don't want to know if you wanted to add anything to it. You had been on the board for quite a while, and then you, you kind of resigned, and now, and then I saw you had re-applied to come back, and I was making sure it wasn't an old application, because we had a couple of those that came back on the list. We were trying not to miss anyone, I just wanted to make sure we had everything correct. And, and you feel that you're in a position to serve if.
Absolutely, that's why I'm coming back. And I basically, um, I took, as Dave said, a vacation. You know, I, I had a lot of stuff going on, I, I was working two jobs. I since retired corporate, so now I have time to do the field trips and stuff that I thought I couldn't do. I didn't, I didn't feel I could do the job comfortably enough, so I resigned. Now I'm back to say, I can do it. I know what needs to be done, I know what needs to be done.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair.
That's, that's what I thought.
Dave McWilliams, four clinical tribe, uh. I need to be in your position, we've had a tremendous amount of amazing applicants. I, I do not advocate going tonight, so let's.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I do not advocate that. Um, amazing, amazing applicants, all I would say is, if you do not get selected to the Conservation Commission, we are going to be standing up, and a, a, a committee, a Subcommittee on Open Space. We would love to have you join that, any of you that don't get on this list. Okay, there's plenty of work to be done in this town when it comes to not only the Wetland Protection Act, but also conservation. So the more volunteers that we can get, the better offer all, so please consider that, um, if you don't get selected for the Conservation. Turn it over to you folks. Good luck.
I should spin it back on you and ask you what you're thinking. Mr. Chairman.
So. I, I, I will say that I am, uh, again, impressed by all the applicants. Uh. If, if I were to pick one person to fill the open slot, it would be Dennis Clark. And I would pick Dennis Clark simply because of his previous knowledge of what's going on in the town. He served the town well as an employee, uh, never had an opportunity to vote at any of our meetings. So I think with his knowledge of the rule, rules and regulations, his history of what's going on in the town. I think he's an invaluable person and would help the town and conservation tremendously, um. As to the other two positions, you know, we have some great standing people in those positions right now. Uh, if they want to, uh, stay on, I, I think that's certainly something that they should be, you know, given the opportunity to do. But ultimately, it's up to you folks to make the decision, and we'll move forward from there.
Your recommendation is Dennis Clark for the one year remaining.
Yeah.
On that, okay.
So the Brian Prank, uh, not the Brian Prank, just, pardon me, uh, Brian Drennan resignation.
Um. You have anything to say, or you want me to just ask for a motion for the two seats for three years first?
I've got nothing to say. You can ask.
Man, it's lonely up here sometimes. So, three. I'd entertain a motion for there's two seats for three years, so I'd entertain that motion if anyone wants to make it.
Are you decided?
So I just jumped back in, I apologize. So. There's.
Yes, please.
I, I guess, Diane, I'm caught a little off guard by your question, so. The open spot could be filled by any of the candidates, even current members? Because when I said Dennis Clark, I was thinking specifically of the position vacated by Brian Drennan, right?
It could be for, we can assign it to anybody.
To be clear, that there's three open seats. You have two members whose three-year term is expiring, and they've applied. They've re-applied.
Re-applying.
Okay, so that's how, I think that's how it's kind of left. But. If the board wished, they could do one, three, three, they could do whatever they, as far as those seats.
They just want to understand.
Yeah, that's, I believe that's, would be correct. You could. I, I wouldn't necessarily agree with it, and I would voice my displeasure at the same, but that's, would be the way to, so, I, again, I'll call for a motion for um, the two, for two seats for three years, if anyone wants to put two names forward.
I will make a motion for Norm Cheever and then that Mizan Olu for a three-year term.
She get it right on the last thing? How'd she do on the last thing? Okay, there's a motion on the floor, Jason.
I will second the motion to appoint Mizan Lu.
Olu.
Olu.
Yeah.
And Norm Cheever to the two seats for three years. Am I right, did I, okay.
Doug Mogan, aye?
Jason Peron, aye.
Diane Gill, aye.
And I entertain a motion for the one years, one year, one seat for one year due to a resignation. So that would be through six-thirty, twenty-four.
And that's to fill Brian Drennan's one-year vacancy.
To fill a vacancy.
Right.
I'll make a motion for Dennis Clark for the one-year remaining term.
Uh, with Mr. McWilliams' recommendation, I, I guess, I'm, I'm gonna second that motion for Dennis Clark for the one-year, one seat, uh, seat for one year, ready for Mr. Drennan. Vacated by Mr. Drennan.
Okay, uh, roll call vote, Doug Mogan will abstain.
Diane Gill, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
I'm happy with those because you have the Open Space Committee going and a lot of good people that can help on that, and I thank you all for applying.
How are you doing with chapter? One eighty-five?
Why are you messing with that?
It's only.
I don't, I don't finish it.
We have a, a open position, I don't know, that I've seen too many applications for, that I'd love to talk to you about for the for the Planning Board Associate. So the Planning Board Associate is, we have a five-member elected planning board, and then the associate is a joint appointment of the planning board and the select board. And what we've always used that seat for as, uh, a learning seat. And it's an active seat, a person's encouraged to come to all the meetings, act on all of, and be an active participant in all things. The only thing you can't do is, uh, vote unless you're needed because of the inability to vote, lack of quorum, or inability of a member to act due to conflict or what have you. So I would.
A three-fifth vote or a four-fifths special permit?
It's only on special permits when you're designated.
When you need a four-fifths vote.
Correct, so.
I want to declare.
Yeah, you don't vote, it's not like you vote on the minutes, when there's a, a member missing, right?
Just dealt with a nation like that recently. In Westfield.
Because it's not always four fifths, Carl, because you could have reduced quorum because of inability to act, but the alternate still, like, associate is still in play.
Right.
I think it's actually alternate is the official term, but, so I would like to further that conversation with you and, and involve the Planning Board Chair as well. I just think it's, it.
Because that's, we, it's, we have to get to that issue soon.
Soon, because, uh, the, our current associate, uh, by the way, twenty-five years ago, uh, I came to a planning board meeting to find out about where's my street, and, uh, a month later, I was on the planning board as the associate. At three, uh, three and a half or four years as an associate, then I ran for a few terms, but our current associate was just elected in his past May to the planning board after serving, like, yeah.
Five years.
Five, yeah, I mean, I think she did five years as the associate before running for election, and was just elected. So it's a great spot, obviously, you know, you can take in the process and learn the process and, and et cetera, et cetera. And it's a, that's also an interesting board, so I'd like to continue that conversation. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, thank you.
My thoughts are back with Doug.
That's what, I, you know, I couldn't, I cannot play cards, because he, he, my eyebrow must have gone up when he said something else.
Yeah, I saw that. That's what I saw.
Okay, we're gonna continue on, because it is growing late, is that all right? All right, acknowledged payables, we did that.
Thank you.
We did the minutes. Acknowledge Patrick Job, Jay Jobs' resignation letter from the Southwick-Tollan-Granville Regional School District, um. We get to have a joint appointment.
Yeah, we'll go through the posting in the, under the regional agreement, the last time it was updated was with the, um, uh, let's see, when Granville joined, so two thousand eleven, so it's pretty well straightforward, the remaining four members of the district in Southwich, not other communities, and the select board jointly sit and interview any and all candidates.
And then make a, a roll, a roll call joint appointment to the school committee. The difference with the school committee versus other positions that this board fills for remainders of terms till the next election, this one is actually until the end of the term. So there will not be an, if, if, I don't know when Job's seat would be up, but if, if, okay, this would be an appointment until twenty-twenty-five.
So it's gonna be essentially, it's a two-year term.
Right. Normally, if, like, if someone left the board in elected position, we would appoint someone until the next election. This is actually the remainder of term, that's just how the district agreement is written. Okay, so we'll just go through that process.
So when that comes before you to sit as a group jointly, you'll get all the materials about how it's all laid out. So that's in motion.
Okay. Acknowledged. Review and discuss the RFP search process for Town Chief Administrator Officer replacement position.
Um, I was asked last week to get copies. Mizan Olu mentioned, well, candidates. He had to know from one of these boards mentioned, I think he acted in the capacity to do it.
No, there was a, the gentleman that was appointed to a one-year term on the EDC uh, has his master's in public administration. I think was, that's the closest I got, I don't think he was actually a C O anywhere, but.
Just kind of, you know. Not that I think, I think you're not allowed.
Yeah, that was Mr. And.
It's a, full confidence.
So you have, um, copies from three or four different communities, so you can obviously do a much more expansive one, or you can just do a limited one and so forth, so that's gonna be one of the things you'll need to look at, and we can obviously, um, um, take edits and you know, whichever approach you want to use and sort of customize if you're a community, but the important things the board can have to do is to you know, there'll be other stuff we'd have to add to it, like we're under a chapter forty-one, section twenty-three, eight law. The town does not have a charter or special act for the position, so it was through a local acceptance. And we also have local town bylaws, it's all for, then we have a job description, so there's all of those kind of things that will be coming. But, so you're gonna have to figure out which ones of these are RFP you want to use as your starting point. And, you know, you certainly want to, um, give it the due attention it needs and the commitment of time and effort to produce a document so it can be released. We have about fifteen to twenty thousand in the account that was appropriated. After fifty-three. You know, across several different entities, and then because it'll be an RFP, you won't be bound necessarily by the lowest bidder. Because you will want to have a firm that has, uh, true experience in doing these recruitments for municipal government.
Yeah.
Because it's very, much more dis, uh, distinct than it is for the prime of second.
Mm-hmm. So.
So did anybody get a chance to thumb through these at all, or?
I've thumb through them, I also put some thought into what um, what I think a search committee should look like, and I want to ask a question of the board as well. Um.
Uh, just one step back, Mr. Chairman, would you be? Uh, just one step back, Mr. Chairman, would you be? Having the. Search committee finalize what the document will be look like, or would it be something that the board? What things would the board be retaining to have control over itself? And then what things would it delegate to a search panel?
That's why we're, that was kind of where I was going for this discussion. So, well, I'm glad, I've learned, I've learned from the best, so as far as if we want to have this board meet. Uh, former chairman is calling a work session, I always found that was not a thing because. What's the difference, uh, other than you can't take a vote, um, and there may, there may be pizza, so, but I think you should just have a meeting, call a meeting. For that express purpose, it doesn't have to be on a regular meeting night, it could be even an off night or whenever, just to kind of have this discussion around this particular. Thing, obviously, it's an open meeting no matter how you do it, um, and by design, we'd like that, that, um. That part, that process, but, um, you know, I think. Up to the board, whether you guys as a board want to develop the RFP. And want to pick a search firm, or you wanted, and then have a. A search committee that may or may not include. More than one member of the select board, or whether, or rather you delegate that to. The search committee itself and let them establish a charter, not a charter, that's a bad word in this day and age, a, a way to go forward. Um, as far as developing the RFP and then. Issuing the RFP, obviously, the select board is the appointing authority to the C O, so no matter what happens, your candidates are coming back to you. And, and, but that's how I see it.
Yeah, well, you, you also have to. You'll be provided with the job description, so you really should also, like we always do when we're gonna get ready to go up. We always review whether or not the job description. Uh, needs to be modified to reflect the skill sets of the person you may want going forward, now tonight was a great example. We sat through quite a few interviews this evening. And you saw how the, the issues relating to the, uh. Uh, the need for revenue in the community and to get it from diverse business interests, so that gives rise to maybe. Looking at economic development. For a skill set for the future. You just. Instituted some other recommendations through earlier boards for best management practices. By creating an H R function. And a soon-to-be-developed procurement function, so then, you know, that would then allow the person who sits in that seat. To be able to also address other board priorities or other community priorities going forward. So that's why it's important that you look at the job description. And you say, okay. Let's look at what the future is and what other things do we think we might want this person to be working on? Now that we're restructuring the, the office in the organization and, and looking at other. Important things that would put resources and dollars and people. Does that make sense?
Perfect.
And then you're also aware, you're gonna also have to somewhere along the line, whether the board does it. Or the committee does it, you'll have to determine what you want for. A, a compensation range, a price point, because you're going to the marketplace. In this marketplace review you're going to do. Isn't just about you interviewing people and wanting them to come here. You know, it, it's gonna be a two-way street, it's the way the, the job market works now. So people are gonna be interviewing. You know, us, our group, our committee. And, uh, the, the, the community, and they're gonna have to see how well it's, um, you know, what the investment's gonna be in that person and what that. Uh, range should be, and I'm sure, uh, Labor Council and some other people can give us an idea on the range. You know, because it may have to be structured differently.
When do you suppose we will have that said job description? As it exists today?
I have it.
I, we have.
Copy did.
Okay.
The latest one.
Right, but I, I was kind of an open rhetorical question, so I.
I'll email it to you tomorrow.
We should.
I've just been busy today doing other things, getting ready for tonight. So, but it is something we need to be, it is something we need to be mindful of and working on and having. Something in play, because I want to make sure that we, we have a transition and we have enough time to do a transition.
Agreed.
Oh, Jason made a comment, he didn't let me leave and. You know.
Hand coffee to the chair. The desk?
Yeah.
All right, so let's. So I want to, let's carry this to the next meeting, but I want to, I want to have everyone thinking about. Um. So, I'll take it, but tonight, this, this is, this is probably, this is a huge job, so I believe, in my opinion. The C O search committee should. From a, a, a composition thereof, and we, you know, using what we've used for similar department head. Um, for example, when we did, you know, certain other positions in town that we've hired. Um, where we were recruiting from outside the firm. Um, you know, I would suggest that we keep peers. Um, of the C O and then other, other important. Um. Positions in town, so I had on my list, off the top of my head, I had the police chief. I have a select board member at least. I have the planning board chair, I have the FinCom chair. And I had the moderator. And, you know, open a suggestion without making it, you know, outrageous, but I think that that's something to. As a starting point.
Well, I know Diane had pointed out to me the video or the, the M M A. Resource thing, and I had watched that several months ago, and they, they had put a lot of weight on making sure the, the, the composition is important in the sense that. You want to at least have enough people that are familiarity with the operating of municipalities in, in their broad-based skill sets. So, otherwise you could get sidetracked. So did you find that conclusion by watching that, um?
I got a lot of good tips out of there. Okay. My initial suggestions were a select board. Chairperson. Michelle Hill. Someone from town council. Either a retired or former. Could be a current school representative. And a retired former select board or FinCom. Person, not a current one. Who may be to sway one way or the other in decision-making. Someone not in the current hustle and bubble. And then. You know, one of those questions was, do you want a community stakeholder involved? But I don't know that they're. As well in tuned to what they'd be making recommendations on.
Yeah.
And, and nobody has experience doing that here.
We only do this once every forty years or so.
What was the process when you were selected, Mr. C O?
Um, it was the, the three members of the board. And it was under a state contract, like a state, um, granted contract. And I had actually been applying in other community, I had, I had paid before multiple boards in other communities. Under circuit riders and individual.
Well, we were your first choice, though. Just say yes, Carl.
Yes.
The screening committee was the three select board members?
Yeah, exactly.
With all three.
What was the structure of the other places you were?
All selectmen too.
All selectmen.
Nine selectmen. Three towns, um, and then other places, it was county governments. Um. State governor's office, things, you know, it wasn't just. Limited to, you know, a local government, it was also others. Besides, because I was coming from federal service. So. Well. You know, when you're inexperienced, you have to go, and there you go. Some of these jobs, you just have to be prepared to move. And that's why, when I talked to you before about the price point.
One of the things, uh, you always have to look at is, our insurance only pays fifty percent for the health insurance. That's a major thing for some candidates, especially if they're coming in and. They're married or they have a family, so that's why sometimes you, you've got to have some flexibility in how you. You address other things, because you, you don't want to have something like that be the reason why you lose the candidate you want.
Yeah.
And is that, that's sort of what I got a sense out of that, watching that, uh, M M A thing too.
Yeah.
So, that's why I'm here, and this is an open frank discussion, and we have to approach it that way. Because this is a serious business and it's, it's an important.
That's kind of where my ideas came from, what I was talking about earlier.
So we'll carry this as an agenda item for our next meeting?
For months.
Yeah, well, we gotta, but we gotta. Keep, we gotta keep moving forward, I think we, we made a little bit of progress, we got all that stuff.
You gotta understand, usually, like, when you assign me to do something, you know, it's gonna get done, it's gonna be moving, but this is not something I can do for you.
No, you can't. And we realize.
Not appropriate.
But I think we should carry this to, to the next meeting to really set the, I mean, you'll set the timeline and set the process for how this is gonna work.
Me under an agreement to help whoever goes in. You know. Into the office as a transition and so forth, but, uh. You know, there's other things I have to move on to and take care of.
Fully understood.
So for the next meeting, should we at least look at the spoke of services?
Yep.
And.
Yeah, yeah, we want to get that out. Yep.
Figured out.
Yep. Yes.
Because whoever you, that entity could really help you move things along. That's, that's the important part, yeah. And there, there, there are three or four firms that regularly do this, I mean, I can look them up for you too.
They take yours.
I think you did.
I've been meeting and talking to these people for thirty years at the trade shows, they have booths, they have everything else, so.
Fair enough.
Jason, you saw all the booths of it last time.
I did, I had a lot of, uh. Flyers and handouts and.
Can't swing a dead cat without hitting a law firm or a, or a civil contractor, or a civil engineering firm, or an accounting firm, or a lawyer. Right?
Yes, that's.
You from there?
Was that a pledge?
Yes.
Or is this still?
Well, it's still.
Acknowledge and accept the following donations totaling one thousand three hundred and seventy dollars to be deposited in the Southwick Animal Control Medical Gift Fund. And Southwick Animal Control Gift Fund. I B S, two hundred and twenty dollars, A Rock Concrete, one hundred dollars, Stella and Wayne D, twenty-five dollars. Timothy G, fifty dollars, Cheryl B, fifty dollars, Southwick Electric, hundred dollars, wouldn't that be Southwick E? Just kidding. Rory C, two hundred and fifty dollars, Sue and John D, a hundred and fifty dollars, Mary and Kevin Q, seventy-five dollars. Robin and Carrie S, fifty dollars, Donna and Kevin B. Fifty dollars, Joan and Thomas H, fifty dollars, Root Banks for Pets, hundred dollars, and. Carrie L, fifty dollars, they need a motion.
Make a motion to accept all the donations to Southwick Animal Shelter as Red Brakes Running Mobile.
Second.
Doug Moglan, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Diane Gill.
Authorized agent. Motion to authorize use of clerical sick bank drawdown or clerical union M O A. To accommodate D P W office manager leave.
Yep, we got something, obviously, the communication from Randy Brown, and we're trying to sort out an issue, so one of these two avenues will be the best way to approve it. Approach it, so, um. I will need the board's, uh, latitude in determining which one it will be, and then we would just go and handle it, it'd be a small. Uh, balance of time to bridge a gap, but, uh. We certainly have an individual who's. Been here for ten years and is certainly worthy of it and been a member of the sick leave bank, the longest member. So we're gonna need to be able to have this latitude to accomplish this issue.
Motion, please.
I will make, you know, taking care of your people is one of the most important things, so.
We do that every day.
Absolutely. We make that motion to authorize the use of a clerical sick bank.
Roll call vote, Doug Moglan, yes.
Jason Perron, yes.
Diane Gill.
By the way, that yes was just for Lisa, because she was teasing me earlier today on the eyes. Um. Motion au- uh, authorized. Agent with R. Levecque Associates for Wally Park Spray Park for nineteen thousand eighty.
That's the, that's meant to read.
It's agreement.
It was transmitted to you electronically.
Yeah, I read it.
It fully represents what we need to do to, uh, get that process underway, so that hopefully we can have a, um. A facility up and running next summer.
Can I ask a question? Why are we doing this? And it's not the. Requester. Requesting board who put, went in front of this, or is this, are the towns?
This is, as, as you recall, what happened was they, they did a process where they got a C P. A vote. And I had said, no, you're also going to need to hire the engineering firm to do these other fifteen or twenty functions, so they went, revoked it. And then they brought the higher number to town.
Mm-hmm.
Because this is, this is important, this is, um, horizontal construction, it's not vertical, so they can continue on with the relationship there. But you are the signatory for the town of Southwick.
Understood.
Other boards. You, the other board was the signatory to the C P C agreement that you signed a few weeks ago for the funding. So that is why we do this.
See, I got you to explain it. Even though I kind of knew the answer.
Uh.
But now everyone knows, so I'll take a motion.
I'll make that motion out there is. The, uh. Agent.
It's agreement, because I read it wrong too. We spelled agreement funny there, it almost reads agent.
Yeah, okay, it's just an R and a.
Like, I know I made a few.
There's just a bunch of letters missing in agreement, just make the motion.
Yes, the motion.
We're good.
Yes, authorize the letter of association.
Second.
All right. And we're starting out this week, we're meeting with them on Wednesday.
Okay, Doug Moglan, aye.
Jason Perron.
The occasions are over, we gotta get moving.
My making some point.
We'll start with our.
You know, how many of these do we have to sign? Want to sign them now or wait till after?
Well, you also have to sign the initial thing on the back.
Uh. Okay, we received, uh, new business, first item on the list for new business, petition for zone change for property location, Crepe's Tea House. So there's been a lot of hubbleoo about Crepe's Tea House and the. gazebo slash outbuilding slash whatever that are there. Um, it's their opinion based on the thing that I read, that the only way to cure the defect that they've. That created over there, that exists over there is to zone change the parcel out of the A C zone. Um. To a different zone, so by, by customary process, uh, all we do is send it to the planning board.
That's right.
Here you go.
This is very perfunctory, this is not your.
So I need a motion to refer this to the planning board for action.
Motion to refer this to planning board.
Second.
Position presentation.
Doug Moglan, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Diane Gill.
Other new business, Mr. Steinhardt.
I didn't plan on, no long lead.
Yeah, nothing tonight, Mr. Chairman. None under new, I got.
Mr. Vice Chair, any new business?
No new business tonight, Mr. Chairman.
None for me, sir.
We talked about the school committee. When do you want me to cover the thing about the thing? Um, old business?
Yeah, that's old business.
Okay. I, I have no other new business tonight then, old business. Sewer system I M, I M A?
Um, I have to. Get back with the attorney to see where that stands, uh, I know the, it, it did go to the city, and we're just waiting to hear back from them. You know. I mean, obviously, they're on summer schedule, so I'm not sure if this is going to be referred to their, um, the appropriate subcommittee.
Okay. Any updates on marijuana, uh, planning board's gonna take that up tomorrow night?
Say, just what we, I'd, I'd mentioned last week, and, you know, it's in there, if that ball's in their court. Once they do that, they need to do, we can move forward.
Muni aggregation for electricity?
Uh, I spoke with, or emailed Beth Greenblatt today, as well as Stuart Orangey from Colonial Power Group, and I'm trying to set up a. Zoom meeting with both Beth, Stuart.
Yep.
Mr. Steinhardt and myself. To start getting this going forward, so we can have something in place, so if this legislation is designed to speed this process up, happens. We can get this up.
Right, that's gonna set up a Zoom call, she just needs, uh, several days from Jason and myself.
That's it.
It's coming on.
Okay. Nine fifteen, skipping select board goals and objectives tonight, skipping the dumpster, Dobelsteed, have we heard any?
I have some, I have some email updates that I'll put in your mail folder, I've been getting them, I don't know if it was in your general mail folder, or it'll be in the next one, they might have come in in the mail, we gained them.
I, I did drive through there and I.
The town D P W and the planner on this issue.
Good, looking forward to it. Fiscal year twenty-four reapportment, appointments to boards commissions, oh boy, we've got a big chunk of it done tonight. Thank, thank you very much.
Are we gonna carry that forward, are we drawing?
Let's leave it, because we got a couple cleanup items to go through.
Okay.
And, um. And I kind of want to use. At a future meeting when we're not. At nine fifteen, kind of go through that process and make sure that. At a future meeting when we're not at nine fifteen, kind of go through that process and make sure that, see where we could do better. Um. Mr. Johnson made a good point. We probably should do a better job of that in our communications out to folks that applied.
It's second.
Yeah, and then we'll, we'll, we'll rec, we should all reconcile that second choice thing.
Yeah.
And um maybe we'll look at that. In a different way next year, maybe people rank, I don't know.
Rank order candidates, you could do it.
If you say ranked choice voting, I'm leaving. Alright.
Use that other word.
And then review of land license for American Legion.
I have provide, we did um.
Several trees died in its honor this afternoon.
Well, last week you committed that we would uh provide to uh Darcy our information on the different agreements. So once we went ahead and. Found five to six agreements that always were five thousand dollars a year. Uh we made that package available to them and what changed that is commensurate with the timing of that letter from the town attorney. Was when the uh land was. Um. You know, modified, the town-owned land was, where the trees were, was modified and uh. And uh all made barren and uh had utilities and other improvements added to it. That then allowed them to generate more economic opportunities, and this is just your sheer of. Of making sure that. You were able to capture monies that, and of course, you end up giving the money back to the school through local receipts and the assessment anyway. But so this is what you all have, that's been provided to the others. And we'll continue to do a file search. I'm, I'm sure there's more old files we could look at. But even if you found something. This land hadn't been. Repurposed and started using for this thing. When any of those older agreements were in place, and secondly, no agreement has. That goes on um, you know, forever. All agreements have to have an end date. So it would be a moot point, even if we found something.
And, and I also sent, uh asked our office to send in uh an email to Commander. Requesting certain documents um from them as well, and, and to aid in.
Well, that would be good, that way the board could reconstruct any. You know, files that could have existed on the table. But I think you'll find that these, these agreements that were done over time. Um. You know, whether they were one year or whatever, you know, I mean, during COVID, we did give a break.
Well, as I said.
Because they didn't have a mo, they didn't have a, a, a nationals.
I don't have a problem listening to anything, just then you're gonna get what you're asking for.
Yeah. But I think you'll, you'll find the information that. Pretty well documented at the length of time.
We asked for.
Showed you the visual maps.
From the same version.
Yeah, formally. Rather than informally, it's just, it, I, I, I would originally was thinking that this would be done less formally, but. Yeah, once you make it formal, it's formal. So we'll handle it formally. Any other old business besides that, Mr. Steinhardt?
Uh, no, no.
Mr. Peron?
None.
Ms. Gale?
Uh, oh, that? No, uh, no, I do not.
That's that. No, I got one thing, uh, two things. Yeah, first of all, yeah. Bert can't be the only one with a sign.
Wow, Jason missed the sign.
Jason, here's your sign.
I did, yes.
So we've been designated a green community officially and last.
Go under the farming?
That's what I was joking about, we're gonna cause accidents with the number of signs we got. So we are now a designated green community. And that's done, and they had the big. Sign presentation thing done. Uh last, what day was it? Thursday? It wouldn't be on a Friday, they weren't coming up this far. Um on a Thursday to present that and us and one of the Long Meadows and Washington.
Sounds good for me, Oklahoma.
And then to top it all off, Friday morning, bright and early. Um. Mr. Peron. Ms. Gale, myself, Mr. Brown and Mr. Bozak at our annual Tour de Roads. And we. Went all over town looking at roads.
Really usually goes in the first five minutes.
New. But we.
Oh, because they've never gone around town and done.
They have not, well, Jason did it last year, but this was Diane's, and we learned some things and we saw some things. So. Absolute.
Dream sheep, that's the word.
That's what they called it when you were picking your base in the military, you call the dream.
So how did it look to, how did it?
Well, we, we did not, obviously, we did not deliberate or discuss anything during our Tour de Roads.
I observing is fine.
We were just observing. The roads are a disaster.
The dream is a nightmare.
And um.
Due to the amount of money.
Yes, roads are a disaster.
Some of them are, yeah.
We saw a couple egregious examples, things that we would love to be able to fix had we unlimited amounts of funds, which we don't.
Done on some of those roads.
Yep.
Side roads or main roads or?
Offshoots, like Garkin.
Yeah.
You know.
Haven't been on that. Time, we did go down, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Still to my life, we didn't go down Curtis, never been there in my life.
Wow, you know what? Next Friday, we'll go for a ride, we'll go on the dirt roads. But I mean, I make it a point.
We converted, I mean, what happened, you know, some of, one of the reasons why we did also get behind at some point in time is because we were spending a lot of money to a design. In construction on the original dirt roads. And so what happens is that was then taking away from actively taking care of the other roads, but it's, it's just a policy decision. It's one of the things you make and if. And, and some of those roads that were dirt were scenic roads, so they had multiple additional extra steps.
I do remember.
The tree warden. And honey, it, it's a tree warden in the planning book, because I've been through all of these hearings. In fact, some of these roads that were reconstructed thirty years ago, I was there when they were being redone.
You know, Carl, I think there's a certain point where. Remember when you first came and you would call people and ask them why, how and what?
Yeah.
And then one day you realized that you're the one answering the phone. How does that happen?
I'm alive.
Well, yeah, it's a good point. Well, yeah, and that was another thing, you know, uh. There's a lot of folks we used to call on that are. No longer available. But, you know, it's. You know, I make it a point, at least every weekend if I can, and certainly every other. Um, so ride around. During COVID, I almost did every weekend to get out of the house, but even still, just ride around. You see things, you learn things, and you pick up things. But um following up on this, the Tour de Roads. Randy's on vacation this week, we're off next week. When we come back, he's gonna come back with a list, then we will, we'll carry it under old business to discuss it and figure out how we're gonna allocate the money. To figure.
Right, I mean, obviously, at one of the, the previous meeting, you know, you had already put the additional um. Resources into what was that, Fred Jackson? So you're already allocated a chunk of it, there's, there's not really much left for.
But it could be, it could be.
Yeah.
Impactful, and we might have to split some of that up over a couple of years in order to get a big project done, and we, you know.
We've done that before, we've done certain sections on roads. Instead of doing a whole road, you take the worst section on certain roads and. It's worked out well, some of the paving has lasted, you know.
Or you do the drainage to let it settle, you know, that was rich, a big component of that, and, and Randy. You know, letting the pavement settle or the, the work around drainage settle before you go and pave it, that kind of thing, so. We're gonna discuss it in, in force after that. We do not need an executive session tonight.
Nope.
Do you like a motion to adjourn?
Would anyone like to adjourn the planning board meeting?
I will make a, a, a motion to adjourn the meeting, sir.
Second.
Doug Mogul, yes.
Jason Peron, I.
Thank you, I.
Thank you, folks. Have a good night.